Hello, everyone. It is now 1:30. And we will take our roll call to ensure that we have all of our school board members with us. Please share if you are present, Ms. Omech.
Here.
Ms. Tolan.
I'm here.
Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara.
I'm here.
Mr. Frisch.
Present.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Marin.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Sizmore Heizer.
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Bukarski.
I'm here.
And Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Here.
Wonderful. We are going to move on to update on close to certify the motion to certify the closed session. In order to comply with section two, that 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on July 13th, 2020. To the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion is made by Ms. Cohen and seconded by Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Let's take the vote. We have Ms. Cohen, Ms. Darrenak Kofax, Ms. Omech, Ms. Karen Corbett, I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Sizmore Heizer, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch. Mr. Frisch, I'm not sure that I see your vote. Okay, so we, and also we have Dr. Anderson and Mr. Frisch. At this point, excuse me, one second, let me get my notes here. At this point, we have certified our closed session, we will move on to our work session topics. And our meeting managers for this section, for this session are Ms. Tolan and Ms. Omech. So Ms. Tolan and Ms. Omech.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Tolan and I will be leading us through today. We have two topics scheduled, as you all know. The return to learn conversation at the beginning at 1:30, we hope to end by 3:00. This is in lieu of the anti-bias curriculum that has been pushed forward in our schedule. And afterwards, we hope for a short break, followed by the SRNR conversation at 3:15. At this moment, there are no clear action items for this meeting. I will allow my colleague Elaine to frame the conversation, but I did want to make sure we go over just a couple of logistics as to how we're going to do this. We're going to try a couple of new tools, so the first being our chat box. Our chat box will be recorded so that it is accessible to the public, but we're going to be using that for questions. And the way both segments of our meeting will go is that we'll, each presentation has been already organized to have break slides. So we will hopefully require a level of discipline from every one of us because of the short amount of time to ask questions specific to the topics addressed on the slides. And I'll have, you know, Elaine will give us the overview, and Ms. Tolan will give us the overview of what topics those are. And at the break slides, staff will pause to respond to those questions. This is to save time, given how limited we are to have a robust conversation. I will be monitoring the chat box to make sure that we are strict, and I ask again that we have content-based questions. Should we have time at the end of this first segment? Each board member may be allowed to speak for one minute, but we really, it's unlikely that that will happen given the length of the presentation. Also, today will be informative, and we will have future opportunities which Elaine will comment on. The same will go with SRNR. The second tool is a next steps Google document. Each of you has access to this, it's also publicly viewable document. Board members should feel welcome to comments or to put their next steps throughout the meeting so that they formulate it effectively. And staff will have the opportunity to provide their insight, and we can prove them at the end. So Ms. Tolan, if you'll go ahead and frame this conversation for on return to learn.
Ms. Omech, I apologize, Ms. Sizmore Heizer, I have a quick process question, please, for an ADA accommodation.
Thank you, that was my question as well.
Can we ask staff to read out loud the question from the chat before answering it to make sure that people, one, know the question and just for the ADA accommodations?
We will make sure that staff does that, and they will be responding verbally to make sure they address the concern, so thank you.
Dr. Anderson, I would like to be recognized for a process question, this is Megan McLaughlin.
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin, please go ahead.
Yes, I'm very concerned that this is all a new process. I did not see communication telling us that the Board had even agreed to this new process. I've been serving for eight years, we have a very tight timeline. The Board's work is its dialogue with each other and with staff. The chat box we just saw in closed session can be a terrible distraction. I am all for new tools, but not when we're in the midst of a work session. I respectfully ask that we follow our protocol and procedure, which is staff presents, we get our turn to speak. I am not okay being told that the only way I'm going to be able to engage in this work session is to be in a chat box and maybe have one minute speak. I respectfully ask we do not diverge from what we've been doing without the Board as a whole determining that we're going to change the way we work with one another.
So procedures were explained in an email to the entire Board on Wednesday with all the details and information. We have an understanding that folks are generally on board. But everything in the chat box, to be clear, will be verbalized by staff to make sure that it goes up under the same understanding.
Ms. Omech.
And also, I think.
There's 12 board members. If someone submits five questions on their own, we will have 60 questions in the chat box. And you're saying that the questions in the chat box will get seen and answered first? I don't understand, we have a three-minute rule where we ask our questions, staff answers, or we comment and share with each other. I do not understand how you, as a meeting manager, are going to change the way we do our processes when the Board has not decided as a whole and as a body that you can change the way our work session operate. This is something for another discussion. We don't get to do this. Meeting managers cannot change the Board's process.
Ms. McLaughlin, the use of the chat box is optional. Anybody who raises their hands will still have their opportunity to ask questions and to have those questions be responded to. Is that correct, Ms. Omech?
No, she did not say that. She said if there's time, we might get one minute. And I respectfully say, no, no board member can change the process of the Board. And the two meeting managers.
Ms. McLaughlin, let's have Ms. Omech respond to that, to that first question. There will be opportunities for folks to raise their hand and have their questions answered. The chat box use is optional. Ms. Omech.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. McLaughlin, I want to point out to folks, we have 1:30 to 3 o'clock for a 26-slide presentation and to ask questions about it. So we're trying to streamline the opportunity for questions to be more efficient, to make sure our needs are addressed, given that we're already at 1:40 and 10 minutes into that. But the point I want to make is that this is not, again, this has all been explained in emails, in multiple emails since Wednesday of last week, since meeting managers' conversations have been had, to try to streamline this. If anyone else has a clear objection, we can take a vote. My concern, though, is that nobody has expressed objection since last week for a process that hopefully, you know, we need to move along to be able to discuss this properly.
Ms. Omech, because, again, time is ticking away, and we really want to be sure that we're judicious with that. Would you please be amenable to having the chat box be optional for those who choose to use it? And anybody who raises their hands can continue to have their questions be answered in our typical way until we're able to have a broader conversation about this a little bit later on.
If that, we can take a vote, if that's the direction of the Board. I just want to be very clear from the beginning that this means either we're not going to finish our presentation today, or questions are not going to, not everyone's going to have the chance to ask verbally, because the time, I mean, you know, there's just no time, we have to end by 3:00, so.
Ms. Omech, if you need to go ahead and. Two minutes, that's fine, but I think the bottom line is, it's 25 minutes for the Board members to be able to ask two minutes each. If people want to use a chat box, that's fine, I would like my ability to speak.
Ms. McLaughlin. That works. We'll provide some choice for our school board members. If you choose to add your comments in the chat box to be responded to, please do so. If you'd like to raise your hand and have your questions be responded to in the more typical fashion, then we will also have opportunity to allow for that. At this point, I think it's really important that we pivot into the presentations, because we do know that time is short. So Ms. Omech, would you please go ahead and proceed?
Thank you. Ms. Tolan was going to frame the conversation for us so that we can move into the presentation.
Thank you. So our first discussion today is on some return to school topics. And the good news is the Board members had opportunities to submit questions to Dr. Brabran and staff ahead of time. People sent in long lists of questions. We all have many very detailed questions that we've been getting from constituents or things we've been thinking about. The presentation today is focused on a number of topics that kind of run through. And just so Board members and the public know, the two things that we really need to come to consensus on today are the overall bell schedule and whether or not our high schools and middle schools will be using an eighth-period day or an A-B block type of scheduling. So please keep that in mind as you're coming up with questions and comments. We do have all of the list of questions, and we'll make sure, you know, staff has those and they're sorting through them to come up with answers to some of the more detailed questions that we have about logistics as we get further down the road to return to school. We do have additional work sessions coming up on July 21st and another one in August around some of these return to school details as well.
Ms. Tolan. Ms. Tolan, if you could please also offer another reminder that the chat box function is for questions only periodically throughout the presentation, that would be helpful.
Yes, thank you. I was just about to say that, and I just made an error, I just made another note as well, the chat box is questions only. You know, do not make comments. Today, we have the, the presentation is divided up into a number of sections. We have a big section at the beginning on health and safety-related issues on return to school, and then we will have time for questions and comments on that. We will be discussing, as I mentioned, the bell schedule and the middle school and high school scheduling, and then a variety of other issues, include things like, you know, what are course offerings that we will and will not have in-person and online comparisons, childcare, family engagement, et cetera. So we'll kind of have this presentation divided into those four sections, health and safety, bell schedule, middle school and high school scheduling, and then the variety of other topics. So with that, I don't want to take any more time unless, Ms. Omech, you think I've missed anything. I would like to turn this over to Dr. Brabran and staff to get going on the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Mulberg, can we just pull up the presentation and we'll go ahead and get started? Thank you, everybody. I know return to school remains a very, very important topic for all of us. It's the topic facing our country, our Commonwealth, and Fairfax County Public Schools. We are here to give you our latest update, and we remain committed throughout the whole process of return to school to bring you as much information as quickly as we can to inform not just your return to school decisions that families and our staff are making right now, but even after decisions are made, to give you that additional information that you want. We are all and every school district recreating an experience for return to school that's never been created before, and we continue to ask for your patience and grace as we work around the clock, literally, including weekends, late nights, to get this right as best we can for our students, our staff, and our entire community. So let's go back to the first slide, or go up to the first slide. Just a little bit of re-centering where we are. It's July 13th on a Monday, we're in the middle of summer normally, this would be downtime, but right now, we're looking at how we reopen schools in a pandemic. As a reminder, COVID-19 appeared here in a major way in mid-March. And by late March, on the 23rd, the governor closed school for the remainder of the year. On June 9th, the governor brought phase recommendations for schools to reopen in fall of 2020. Six days later, Fairfax County Public Schools released three scenarios for reopening school. And then just a few weeks after that, we shared the two options that we would use to approach our reopening, offering choice, which was the clear feedback of our community and of this Board for both in-person and virtual full-time instruction. We can go to the next slide. Just a reminder for the guiding principles for reopening, we want this to be a safe learning and working environment for our students and staff. That remains our paramount commitment. We also maximize family choice, and we're in the middle of exercising that choice right now. We want our students to have good instruction, we want good training and flexibility and support for our staff so that they're prepared this year to be successful. And I appreciate the Board's support of moving the calendar date to September 8th, so we have more time to do that, and providing proactive and clear communication with translations to all families and staff. This is current intention data as of Monday. You can see on the left is student intent or student and families. We still have a number of families that have yet to make their decision. Currently, we have the student in-person preference running at 59% and the student online preference at 41%. We still hope to hear from many more folks, and we have the rest of, till Wednesday for the deadline, the close of business. And again, those that we do not hear from, we will be marking that as in-person. For our teacher preference, we have many of our teachers who have responded, but many who still want as much of information, again, which we will help to provide today. Our current in-teacher in-person preference and online is right at 50/50. We can go to the next slide. Health and safety is the big topic that we're all talking about. We are going to release later today our health and safety draft guidance document. This has been thoroughly reviewed by the Fairfax County Health Department that addresses establishment of predetermined isolation rooms, talks about the daily temperature checks, the screening form, the questionnaire, face coverings, visitors, recess, PPE, meals, athletic protocols, cleaning, and instructional considerations. We can move on. We also are working on a draft policy and regulation requiring face coverings to mitigate the spread of infectious disease, and we'll bring that to you later this month at another return to school. But we are going to be using language that says that all students over the age of two years, staff and essential visitors must wear face coverings, cloth are disposable while inside FCPS facilities and during FCPS-provided transport. What are the exceptions? Here they are, eating and drinking, exercising, under supervision of a school official who directs for the face covering to be removed, a health condition, community impairment or disability preventing an individual from wearing or a child under two years of age. Health and safety is, again, so important to know, and folks have wanted to know, what are we going to have and when are we going to have it? Hand sanitizer, one per employee, will be here by July 17th. A sanitizer, dispensing stands for buildings and large entrances, high schools will get eight, middle schools four, elementary will get two. That will be arriving in early to mid-August. A hand sanitizer, a gallon pump, one per classroom will arrive by mid-August, well before the start of school. Spray bottles and Virex disinfectant with paper towels, we'll have that, one per classroom again by mid-August. We will be looking at supplemental supplies during the year. Also, cloth mask, one per employee and one per student, those will both be arriving, the employees by mid-July and the students by mid-August. We're going to be buying disposable masks, we'll be buying gloves for all of our folks, custodians, bus drivers, T-Spec, food service, other staff. That'll be here by mid-August. Face shields, we will have enough face shields for our special education staff, bus drivers, attendants, and frankly, any teacher or employee who wants a face shield will be able to have it. We're also going to have gowns with laundry service included for some of our special education teachers, bus drivers, and attendants that will come by the late part of August. And temporal thermometers, all schools, one per 500, and we're looking at actually getting more thermometers than that or more thermometers than that, than that ratio as procurement can allow, and some TempaDots that serve as a replacement for a thermometer if we're finding trouble in getting additional thermometers, like everybody in the country is trying to do. Go to the next slide. Health and safety, we're going to have free standing individual counter shields will be provided to schools and offices. We'll have at least two per school initially. You saw me show that actually over the weekend to CNN, that was part of their coverage of return to school. We'll have ceiling and wall-mounted counter shields in main offices and reception areas, one per main office. And we'll also have sneeze guards for teacher desk. And we'll be reviewing that with potential next steps based on principal feedback and funding. We would use those for all teachers' desks, and the order would be. So let me go to the next slide, air quality. We're going to work to follow the CDC and Virginia Department of Health guidance to reduce the risk of exposure. We're going to ventilate outdoor air throughout the day to get that outdoor air circulation. We're going to have enhanced preventative maintenance on our systems, all of our mechanical, electrical, HVAC, including replacing air filters regularly, enhanced building checks to make sure our HEPA fan and filtration systems are working. We're the health department on the latest information and continue to work on emerging information related to HVAC as it relates to transmission within spaces with our health experts. Health and safety as well, if a confirmed case is in the school, the health department will work closely with school administrators to determine a course of action. The process will be as follows, the isolation of the individual. The student, their parents, or guardian or staff member will be interviewed to determine possible exposures inside and outside of the school. Student staff member will be isolated at home, and the health department will monitor them daily. The identification of all who've had close contact, which is going to, is defined as six feet for greater than 15 minutes, being in contact six feet or closer than six feet for 15 minutes with the COVID-19 positive student or staff member, and quarantine those folks that have been identified to have been in close contact. And then they will be interviewed for symptoms, asked to get tested, and be monitored by the health department for the duration of their quarantine. Also, for health and safety school closures, decisions on classroom and school closures need to be made on a case-by-case basis in consultation with the health department. The factors to be considered are the size of the class, the extent of social distancing in place while the ill persons were present and infectious, the extent of interactions and exposure in the area, and the location of the case in the class needs to be assessed to determine the potential risk for others. I know people want to see that breakdown, what that looks like step by step. Workflow for both the tracing and the investigation, the CDC has those references, and we provided them here. Let me go to the next slide. Social distancing, I want to reiterate, our goal is to use the six-foot of social distancing and setting up our classrooms wherever possible per CDC guidelines. As I shared, we are aware of the additional guidance from the state Department of Health and the state superintendent with some additional guidance they provided. But this remains the peeling guidance. We will look at that less than six-feet flexibility from the state superintendent and the Virginia Department of Health as we refine our plans. That's our health section. I know there are a lot of questions, I couldn't read them all and talk at the same time. So I'm going to work now to go backward and and answer them to the best of my ability and my staff, who is here and ready to help. So let's see, the very first one looks to be Rochna's. If kids have symptoms that could be COVID but are similar to the common cold or strep, how long do they need to stay home? Do they need a negative test before returning? How would a student stay home during a quarantine access learning? Would it be asynchronous? Would it be similar to a kid who is homesick and that would have the ability to access virtual? Can we leave some room, virtual class sizes, to leave room for students like this to come in and out? Let me answer the second question and then ask Lorraine or Leah or Teresa, whoever we have, and I think we have them all with us today, to answer the first question on the symptoms. But on the second, we're going to follow a normal set of policies when kids are absent. So, short-term, kids will continue to work with teachers to do their makeup work, and we would very much work to have teachers provide that access to them, just as it would in a normal day, providing assignments for them and sharing it asynchronously, anything that they missed if they couldn't be there, and they may be able to even check in on a virtual basis. We want to be shifting kids just for normal colds into our virtual option. They would stay with their teacher, short-term. If there was a longer-term illness, we could look at that shift to a different option, just like we would for any kid. As far as the first one on the symptoms around COVID but are similar, and do they need a negative test before returning? Lorraine, Leah, or Teresa, would one of you three like to, who's best equipped to answer that, answer that question, please?
Hi, yes, Dr. Brabran, this is Lorraine, I'd be happy to answer that question. There are a couple of pieces to that question. So when we look at students who may have a cold or strep, the deciding factor will be the flow chart that the health department will be providing with a COVID lens to their school health aides in the health room. When that child goes into the school health room for an assessment, the school health aide will use the flow chart and determine whether or not there are any other COVID symptoms that may be present or if there has been any connection with anyone with COVID. And if there has, they would go into the predetermined isolation room. However, if we know that that student, you know, has been with a cold or perhaps they have allergic symptoms and they are known to have allergies, the way that that would be handled would be very different. The school health aide would have that information available to her and may be able to make that assessment right on the spot. However, if we have a student with an allergy that comes to the health room and is presenting with a temperature at that time, they would be handled as if they have COVID-like symptoms, and the parent would be asked to take them home. At that point, the student would not be able to return to school without a physician note saying that this was still related to an allergy or some other process that was not COVID, and that information would be provided to the school. If the physician decides that that student should have a COVID test, that student would not be able to return to school until we have the results of that COVID test.
Thank you. Let's see, next question was, after that, about a plan that breaks down the constituencies in our schools with a rundown of how we address their needs in both in-person and virtual. For example, staff members that serve special needs, kindergartners will have different needs than a high school student in general. And have we provided a breakdown of serving needs in consideration of those differing needs? I believe, Ms. Keys-Gamara, you're talking about PPE, and we provided a broad. I believe, Ms. Kiesgmar, you're talking about PPE and we provided, uh, a broad view of all the PPE. We, we mentioned a few groups like gowns for special education, uh, teachers who need it and bus drivers, but we could get that additional PPE detailed by type of position. Um, be glad to do that. Um, Rajna, you mentioned, uh, the, do inside facilities include outdoors on facility property? If not, can this include outdoors when we're not able to meet it related to mask? Uh, I'm not sure I really understand what that, I'm not sure I understand that question.
May I clarify? May I clarify? Um, the policy, as you stated earlier, said that mask required when inside FCPS facilities. Um, my question is, does inside FCPS facilities, you mean literally inside or on the grounds? It's, I'm thinking of classes that may go outside for short breaks. I'm thinking of PE, if we have PE outside, what is the mask policy for classes that may be outside but on FCPS property?
Uh, I see your.
Inside.
Yeah, my, my answer would be to that, one of the exceptions is as directed, and if the kids were outside and over six feet socially distanced, they could be directed to remove their mask for mask breaks, uh, that kind of thing, uh, or, uh, they're doing a PE activity where they are six feet apart. So I.
Need to clarify that.
Okay. What, we'll work to put a little more detail in on that. And then the other was, can we require face shields where masks are not able to work? Masks maybe, those with disability who can't wear masks might be, be able to wear face shields. So all of the mask discussion, we know there's several board questions on that. We're gonna go ahead and develop a formal policy for the board to review and approve along with an accompanying regulation. So we gave you a broad idea of what we're talking about today, and then we can work and engage you and the public on exactly how, uh, we want this policy and guidance to work well before any kid steps in on, uh, September 8th. Um, and Carl, you've got the same question about like if they refuse to handle, play out the scenario. We really wanna look at mask. Again, we can do this when we do the policy and regulation. We want this to be a health and safety issue as opposed to a discipline issue, but we recognize there could be some cases if a kid continually refuses to wear a mask, uh, that we're gonna need to have alternatives and we can talk about those as we bring you the policy and regulation. Um, we're not going to have teachers continue to deal with, uh, students who for no reason other than simple, they don't wanna wear the mask, are gonna continue to do that because it's a health and safety danger. Um, Laura Jane, you asked about, uh, the ratios, what were the ratios for decided number of stations? Mr. Smith or Mr. Plannenberg, could you talk a little bit about ratios for the sanitizer stations?
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, it was really based upon quantities that we could probably get to procure, um, but I'll let, I'll let either Lee Burden and Michelle Pratt weigh in a little bit further about that.
Uh, yeah, it was just an estimate to start where we assumed eight per high school, uh, four for middle school and two per elementary school. That results in about, uh, 600 of the automatic, uh, dispensing stands, um, but we have 1,500 on order, so we can easily double that, uh, or more. Um, but for now, that was just the ratio that we used at the beginning point.
Well, that's a good nugget, Ms. Burden. You say we've already ordered double the amount so we could double the ratios for each of those if we wanted to.
Yes, we, we planned on dispensing 600 and have about fif- and have 1,500 on order.
Great, fantastic. Uh, Stella, you asked again about repeatedly refusing and we, we will bring you in the policy and reg, a, uh, recommendation, and I wanna be clear, we're not going to tolerate, um, again, if it's simply about, I don't wanna wear the mask and it doesn't fit one of the exceptions, kids that remove the mask and pose then a threat to, to themselves and to other children. Um, the Virex question, Megan, uh, let me see this here. Will it be pre-mixed before being placed? Actually, Jeff, can you help a little bit on this, on Jeff or Marty?
Absolutely, Dr. Braybrand. Yeah, the, the, the people that mix the actual Virex solution in the schools are generally custodians, and they've been trained to do that, so they will be continuing to do some mixing, um, but we're not, we're not anticipating or asking other folks to do it. Um, in the event that there would be, we'd have to have the motion trained.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned about hand sanitizers, stations, uh, they wanted it every door. Again, we've just doubled it and, uh, we can look at whether we can, whether doubling gets us to every door. Probably doesn't get us to every door, but maybe every door entering a building, we could look at that as a, a goal. Uh, so thank you for sharing that. Uh, Mr. Fresh, you mentioned about a classroom being quarantined or school closed, how they transition to distance learning, get specific with the process. Um, you know, Mr. Smith or, uh, Dr. Persidio, do you wanna talk about that? Mr. Smith, about the, the, the kids will really have the links available already, even if they're coming in person and it'll just be using those links for the virtual. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so when our teachers come back, uh, in the fall, they will be engaged in professional development, but they will also have time to develop, uh, the links that students will be using. And so if we were to, uh, have to revert to, uh, a fully virtual session, uh, the teachers would just simply, uh, use the links that students, uh, would be getting regularly. So, uh, we feel that giving those teachers, uh, time prior to the beginning of school to get those links established, uh, will help, uh, provide a, a quick turnaround.
I, I, I think the other point too, and Dr. Persidio, we will make sure that teachers are engaging students, even those that are in-person students with those links throughout the year so that, uh, they've got, uh, the skill set at the beginning of the year, but throughout the year to be able to use them if we have a quick pivot to all virtual. Dr. Persidio, do you want something else about that?
Uh, yes, Dr. Braybrand, that's correct. So students will be practicing, um, accessing both materials and, um, using the links, uh, if, even, even when they select in-person instruction. Additionally, we're in the process of developing some professional development and some guidance for our teachers during, uh, the back-to-school, uh, preparation days prior to the first day of school where they would, uh, reach out to students and families and make sure that the students and families were prepared, um, to use the technology successfully as well, uh, even prior to the first day of school. And then after that, they'll continue to practice with the technology so that we can be sure that we can pivot, um, really on, you know, a, a day's notice.
Thank you, Dr. Persidio. Uh, Ms. Kiesgmar, you followed up about requiring all schools, uh, persons entering to wear a mask. That is going to be our requirement. We did list the six exceptions for, for clarity, but yes, that will be our expectation, and I will bring the policy and reg for the board to finally review, uh, about, uh, someone, whether it's a child or an adult, uh, who refuses to wear a mask. Actually, we'll have a separate section for a child or student, uh, versus an adult since it's, it's, it's a slight, slight difference for what, uh, consequences could be. Um, Ms. Corbett Sanders about looking at the hallways. We're getting the final day and for our principals, and then they're gonna do their footprint walk of the school, and absolutely, we're gonna look at hallways being a one-way as a possibility. We're not ready to say that for every school because we haven't yet looked at the numbers and just the, uh, footprint. I don't know, Mr. Smith or Mr. Plannenberg, do you have any other comment on that that would be helpful for the moment or?
And we would look at that as a school by school. You have one-way hallways, you want to be able to ensure that you have, uh, the appropriate, uh, egress and ingress to particular areas, and so that would be a school by school, uh, but certainly we will be providing one-way signs, uh, to our buildings and they can place those in hallways and/or stairwells. But again, it, it will be based on, um, the, the assessment of the building itself.
Thanks, Marty.
And to just add to that is, is really, you know, if you think about one-way period down one hallway, that would be extremely challenging. If you take a look at the elementary schools that do a really good job of keeping individual lines of students now, um, they're moving in one direction but on one side of the hallway. And I think, I think that would be probably more realistic. I just don't wanna mislead anybody, but Mr. Smith said it all.
Jeff, that's very well said. Thank you. Yes, I mean, a lot of elementary schools use the kids lining up and then move, and that could be a very great tool and, uh, uh, we need to give our principals a menu of tools and then let them figure out what makes sense given their facility footprint. Um, hey, uh, Jeff, would you take the next one? Rajna's asking, will all schools have HEPA filters and will teachers be allowed to bring any additional filters for their classrooms?
Well, again, that's an emerging question. We've been taking a look at all the information that's come in, and I really, it would probably take me about, uh, 20 minutes to respond because the standards for ventilation have changed over the years. The bottom line is, we do have and use HEPA filters when we do have, uh, certain occurrences or occasions to do so or need to do so. Our, our regular filters are at a certain level of filtration that we feel is, um, pretty adequate. However, with the new information, uh, there may be an increased request for it. Because we have so many different systems that have everything from, uh, emitting 15 cubic feet per minute per person of mechanically introducing air and some of the old standards were five cubic feet per minimum, there, there are just so many variances to this. I'll be providing an answer in more detail on what we're looking at. Our team has been really taking a look at the evolving situation about, uh, the air particulates and the potential for transmission and transmissibility of droplets. But so far, you know, I realize the World Health Organization has said that that is not, um, a, a, a factor yet, but again, this has been evolving. That may change. There are a number of doctors, and I wanna thank the school board's members for sending me this information. Our team is analyzing as best as possible. Um, we do think we're gonna need some outside help on this. Um, but we, we do have the ability to provide some type of HEPA filtration, but again, I, I'll be providing a more detailed, uh, reference to, uh, the ASHRA guidance and so forth and the statements they have. And I mean, the World Health Organization was dated, um, on the 9th of July, so, I mean, it, it's not at a date, but again, this is evolving to where there's more discussion about EV, um, uh, basically, uh, zapping stuff as it comes in and also the HEPA filtration. So we're looking at both of those. Um, the HEPA filtration, I will say, does put a drag on, uh, your mechanical system. So if you think about your home, if you put a higher, uh, density filter, which is a HEPA filter, um, that density, uh, reduces the airflow circulation on your unit and therefore strains your unit. Um, it's not that it can't be done, but it has to be monitored and, and tracked, um, religiously, which we already do with our filter replacement. That's a long story, and actually, that's the short one, but I'll have more in the future.
That's right, Jeff. And just a reminder, all of the current major health organizations maintain that COVID-19 is transmitted person to person, but there is this emerging information, um, and we need to stay on top of it, and we will, and we'll communicate it to the board and community and take the appropriate action, uh, around that as it relates, uh, to this issue. So thank you, Jeff. A lot of questions I see from board members about the cleaning of the desk, who's doing it? The kids and the teachers and principals? Um, the truth is, this is something we are working. We've been working with our principals, uh, meeting, our teachers associations, uh, Dr. Persidio has invited them to become part of the implementation. They've been serving on the task force, but we wanna get them now into some of this, uh, more nitty-gritty of like the desk, who's cleaning? And so we'll be able to provide you an update after we have some of those meetings. We have a meeting scheduled this Wednesday with our principal, uh, associations. We're inviting te- teachers to be a part of that, and, uh, I can give you, you'll have that answer, um, you know, as we, uh, have a future return to school update. Uh, we have enough desks for students that want to return because we already had desks for, you know, if everybody returned, uh, this is Stella Pokarski's question. So we have enough desk and some of our schools don't even use desk anymore, they use tables, and so we're working about the, the, uh, distancing using tables, uh, and making any changes in, uh, classrooms based on their, uh, principal feedback. Um, Karen Kiesgmar asked about students and staff being protected while attending PE when not wearing a mask. Uh, evidence suggests that six foot is insufficient in that setting. Um, Lorraine or Leah, do you wanna tackle the whole outside and PE piece, uh, and not wearing a mask versus wearing a mask?
Dr. Braybrand, this is Leah. Um, I believe that what we have right now, and of course, we're looking at, looking for guidance and input on that, is including that it would be under the direction or the supervision of school officials when students would be able to distance and, um, when exercising would be under the supervision of someone who could direct them as such. So we would be addressing that as students being, um, supported, um, and supervised by staff at any time when they would not be doing that, wearing their mask or exercising.
Right, Leah, I think what Ms. Kiesgmar's question though is about the health piece of that. I mean, yes, that's what it would be, but isn't it still, is it still dangerous to, even when you're outside doing PE, not having a mask, um, you know, with six foot?
No, if, if I may clarify, Dr. Braybrand, uh, I, as far as I know, being outside is probably the safest option. I did not see, or maybe I overlooked, uh, guidance with respect to whether we're talking about having PE inside and whether it seems that we're talking about not having a mask in that setting. So I think that parents would like to have some assurances as to how, when they're participating in sports, how we intend on keeping students safe.
My apologies, I, I misunderstood the question. Um, we have been working with John Reynolds on that and also with our health and physical education staff, and we'll look to provide more specific guidance for that as, as it becomes avail- available and we're able to work with them to put that together.
We know this is something we'll put in a future RTS update, uh, Ms. Kiesgmar, because it is gonna be a question, uh, when we start to have our kids, uh, uh, even more out and about, and we already have kids coming back for conditioning right now. Um, the next question, Nathan, you know, you asked about the desk too, and I, I, I would just say, Nathan, welcome to the school board. We're thrilled to have you. I don't think I personally, uh, got a chance to say congratulations last time. I know we've emailed a few times, uh, but welcome, and we're gonna, we're gonna work with, uh, our teachers and, uh, you know, honestly, Nathan, this may be one to, give me the student perspective, give us the student perspective, uh, on the appropriateness. There may be some students that would not want to for various reasons, and I think we certainly would need to honor that if we were to ask kids to be a part of it. Um, about random testing with student and staff.
Dr. Braybrand, sorry to interrupt, just please read the questions if you don't mind for ADA.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Nathan, you had asked, can, uh, teachers be expected to place wipes on the each of the desk in the classroom during the transition periods for students to wipe down desks once they enter each of those classes? And I shared, we'll get those protocols honed out, uh, in the weeks ahead, working directly with our action teams, with our principals and teachers at the table. Um, Elaine, you asked about ongoing discussions with the health department about regular or random testing of kids and staff. We've started those discussions, um, uh, you know, we, we've started those discussions. We're gonna stay very closely, uh, aligned with our health department. We, we would love to see more testing and random testing, uh, but, uh, I think testing remains one of the challenges for the whole Commonwealth to get that up. I think Fairfax County has seen it better, but what more can we do with a return to school lens? Uh, what do you mean, Rajna asked, what do you mean, we'll look at less than six feet guidance? Rajna, there could be some special education classrooms that even now we weren't gonna be able to maintain six feet. Um, there could be, uh, a classroom for the 50/50 or the in-person, uh, a certain class where it might be a five foot to get a, 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 an extra student in, given the, the, the capacity of the school, uh, or if the school is slightly overcapacity, and I'd like to leave some of that flexibility, but still say that the prevailing plan is going to be six-foot social distancing as we set up our classrooms. Um, Karen Kiesgmar, you asked about require PE classes to be outside. Um, I don't know, Dr. Persidio, have we required that or simply suggested that outside PE is recommended? I don't know that we've required it yet at this point.
No, we haven't required it, uh, yet at this point, but we are putting together, um, health and safety guidelines and instructional spaces, uh, really for all of our instructional programs, including PE, and, um, we would encourage PE to be done outside, uh, wherever practical, but not required.
Thank you. Tammy, you, Tammy Dernak-Kofax, you mentioned, uh, a, a great question about staff and students being tested from the county guidance, that there won't be a letter from, uh, the county until an alternative diagnosis is ruled out and a positive test is available. How long is the county taking to get results? Say it's a week, families have no notification until that time. That's, your understanding is my understanding, and I think this is one of the things we need to continue to talk to the health department about, this time lag. Um, and, um, I know Dr. Anderson, uh, as the new chair, will be meeting with Chairman, uh, McKay and my, myself and Brian Hill, and I think. and Brian Hill, and I think this is one of the questions. What can we do to really work on this guidance to help get something back quicker to our community? And can we, can we ramp up testing for our schools to have a quicker turnaround time?
Dr. Brabran, I would just like to say that that is, that could be a key for me, whether or not we are ready to do this, or if we should. If the county is not getting tests, and the New York Times yesterday noted that basically Virginia is one of the 35 states that remain below the minimum level of testing to reduce the spread of COVID. That, to me, is just an unacceptable answer if they are not sending anything out and it's taking over a week to get tested. We don't have those quick tests, and this is crucial because we are asking, we are putting people in danger, and this has been the question at the heart of the matter for weeks now.
Thank you. I certainly will make sure it's on our agenda.
Just to make sure we're consistent, I do want to make sure we're sticking the questions during the presentation. We still have two-thirds of the presentation left, folks, and I would like to give everyone an opportunity to comment later, but we do have paid consultants waiting on us for later. So, just time check here. Dr. Brabran, if we can make sure we just finish these questions to move on to the next section of the presentation.
Yeah, there's a lot more, there's probably, I don't know, I'm trying to look, maybe, I hadn't counted yet because I'm just going one by one. I can keep going, or I can stop, and then we can come back to other questions at the end. It's, I defer to you and Dr., I defer to the board right now. I can keep going, or I'll stop and go to the next section?
I did. We need to go.
Go ahead, go ahead, Doc.
I think we probably do need to stop to go to the next section so that we can have the opportunity for feedback that everybody can speak to rather than just the questions in the chat.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion that you take a poll of the board for that? Because many of us have not had our questions answered, and the health and safety piece is probably one of the most critical pieces for people to make decisions on.
So, we had made, we had made a clear delineation in our chat box as to a time deadline for the questions. We can, we'll proceed until that deadline since that was the expectation, and everyone had the opportunity to ask, and we will forward to instructional, instruction after that. So, Dr. Brabran, please continue, and you will see a point in the chat where we stop with the questions.
All right. Thank you, and again, one thing I can offer the board, whatever format you all decide as this, whatever format you all decide, if there's questions we haven't answered, I can commit to getting them back and presenting them at our next return to school, which is actually, I believe, just a week from now, we'll have another update for you, and I'm sure there will be additional questions, including the ones you've already shared. If we can put the board back up, the next section, which is around instruction. Thank you, and I'm just getting.
I'm sorry, Dr. Brabran, but Ms. Amish just said that we were going to have the questions answered up until a point where she indicated in the chat that no more questions were being, going to be able to be asked, and that piece is a little bit further than where you're at now, sir.
Well, thank you. I missed that, my apologies.
Dr. Brabran, if it's helpful, I can read the question, and then you can think of the answer or who you would like to direct the question to. Would that be helpful to you?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so from Mr. Fish, what precautions are being taken for choirs, band, theater, et cetera? I'm hearing a great deal of confusion over how they will do their jobs, in person or distance? What guidance are they giving, and how will we help teachers whose program recruitment suffers because of COVID?
Dr. Presidio, would you talk a little bit about what we're doing with our fine arts? I know we're issuing some guidance, we're about to share here in a few more slides, and we'll have additional guidance coming later.
Yes, so, in addition to the information that we're going to look at in just a minute, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we are developing health and safety guidelines for all of our instructional programs, and when we look at our performing arts, we feel confident that we can actually offer the vast majority of these classes, both in-person and online. And again, our instructional specialists in these different areas have been looking and working with school-based staff around classroom safety procedures. We've identified certain masks, for example, that students playing wind instruments would use that have additional health and safety precautions. So, the only place where we really think with respect to fine arts, where we cannot offer a program right now, is going to be chorus at the elementary level, and those students would have general music instead of chorus. And again, we've looked at the performance spaces, and we believe that we can socially distance beyond the six feet in the performance spaces and be able to provide, again, these courses both in-person and online in a safe manner.
Thank you.
So, the next question is from this Corbett Sanders. What about ensuring our, that our teachers are given the time to self-quarantine and not be, and not in school? Similarly, what are we doing to ensure that we do not penalize teachers who do not have sufficient sick leave that either come down with COVID-19 or required to quarantine?
Sean, I believe you're here. Sean, would you, would you help in responding to that? I know that's come up frequently.
Sure, good afternoon. So, we do have an opportunity for staff to access up to two additional weeks of paid sick leave under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. So, in addition to the leave individuals have been allocated, they do have the opportunity to access that additional leave.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean, and then is that considered?
That doesn't answer the question, folks. It doesn't answer the question. The concern is that if you are quarantining, you won't get the sick leave piece. And secondly, if you do have COVID, then your sick leave of even two additional weeks may not cover what is necessary to fully recover.
Sean, for the, for the quarantine, when you're quarantined, does the Coronavirus Act allow for the quarantine time to be covered as sick leave?
It does, yes.
Right. So, so, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you're asking about then beyond, it covers the quarantine time, and then you're asking what beyond that?
That's correct. The concern is that there's a gap, for example, some of our newer teachers may not have sufficient sick leave, so if they come down with it, they may not have the sick leave to cover their daily living expenses associated with them being out sick.
We can always go back if the board would like, and if the board directs to review our existing leave policies, we have, you know, we have this Coronavirus CARES Act, the two additional weeks of leave, and if the board so directs, we can go back and look at, add in what the, you know, what sort of framework we could bring you all for folks with low leave, for whatever reason, whether it's years of experience or prior use of leave for other things like illness or what have you.
Dr. Brabran, I think this may be a good idea. School board members, at the end of this discussion, we will be sure to take that pulse and provide that direction to Dr. Brabran regarding staff leave.
Yes, Dr. Anderson, that is my request. Thank you.
This is Elaine Tolan. A quick reminder that we do have a next steps document open in Google, so, that we'll be sharing at the end, so please, board members, go ahead and, you know, put these next steps in there as we move through the meeting.
All right, Dr. Ivy, are there other questions? Or is it time to go to the next section?
I defer to Ms. Tolan and Ms. Amish as far as when it's time to go to the next session. As far as the next, the next question, it's still related to the sick leave, so does it include quarantining for two weeks, and is that considered short term? So, we can add that to the question regarding leave for, sick leave for teachers. Ms. Pocarski has the next question. Has the health department provided any guidance about disease hotspots in Fairfax County and what that means about school closures? And then, please clarify what an isolation room is for our community, because it has caused some confusion.
Leah or Lorraine, do you want to take that question?
Hi, this is Lorraine, Dr. Brabran. I'd be happy to take that question. We are in continual communication with the health department as we get closer to school opening to determine what exactly the hotspots would look like and how that would influence our school closures. And for the question regarding the isolation room, isolation room is a room, actually a predetermined isolation room. It is separate and distinct from the health room, and students who are presenting with COVID-like illness would be assessed in the predetermined isolation room, and they would use their flow charts, the school health aide or the school staff would use their flow chart to determine next steps.
Okay, the next question's from Rach. So, do parents need to update health forms to identify seasonal allergies? Lorraine, Leah, please.
Yes, hi, this is Lorraine again. Yes, we actually really do need to partner with our communities and all of our families. All of that information must be updated. It's critical for us to have not only seasonal allergy information on the health information forms, but we also need for parents to make sure that everything is accurate on the emergency care communication form so that we can reach them if the need arises.
Thank you. Ms. Kees-Gamarra asks, what options do our staff members have available if a student's parent appears to be sick, but the parent continues to send the child to school? Have we taken additional steps to make sure we have appropriate ventilation in our classrooms and spaces? Jeff, let me let you take the ventilation question, and you had a nugget today that I think would be helpful to share with Ms. Kees-Gamarra, and then I'll go back and reread the first question or think about the first question a bit more. Jeff?
Yeah, well, there were a couple of things I did say to that. Our ventilation within our school systems, because we have, you know, the equivalent of the five pentagons, a space 27 million square feet approximately, we have a number of different types of systems that we have, mechanical systems, but the airflow that we provide into our spaces, it varies from some form of air control, some of our HVAC, to some of our units that bring in direct outside air. And that doesn't even get into the discussion about the humidity and the issues caused with some of the outside air particulates that might be pumped in if the air isn't controlled. But the bottom line on this in terms of increased air, and I think what Dr. Brabran was referring to, is when we're talking about 50% of our student body being back in the facility, we've just doubled the airflow for that space for those students. So, it is a really good way moving forward, but again, as I said earlier, we're looking at all of this in combination with what the latest information is.
Thanks, Jeff, and Ms. Kees-Gamarra's other question. Yeah, if a kid appears to be sick, but the parent continues to send that child to school, that kid is going to be sent to the nurse clinic, and if it's presenting with COVID-19 symptoms or COVID-like, COVID-19-like symptoms will be sent to the isolation room, and parents will be asked to pick their kid up. We are going to have to have a culture strongly enforced with partnership with our parents and send your child to school if they do not feel good. That's true for our children and our staff, and that's a great question. Karen Corbett Sanders asks, can we have a policy in advance of our July meeting so it can be adopted? We'll get it in advance. We're working with legal to finish it up, and we'll certainly post it and have it for you all to review and can vote on it prior to you all going on recess. Ms. Tolan asked about infection control. How do you plan to optimize reducing the total number of students to interact with one another, Europe and Asia are a bubble? I will be sharing later, I'm recommending the AB block schedule, and we're going to limit the transitions through that AB block. So, I had to share more about that when we get to it. Can we make SRNR addendum? We don't think we need to make the SRNR redone. We're going to have a separate policy, and SRNR speaks to all of our school policies, so it kind of keeps it from having to be finalized. Still wanting to work with teachers and principals on things about mask or anything else. Karen Kees-Gamarra asked about, to follow up on my constituency, can we talk about principals and RAS, identify constituencies that they serve, so they can have a discussion about anticipated needs and procedures? That's a great idea. I think the point is, let's talk to our community, especially those underserved and underheard. What do they need to feel comfortable to return to school? And we can talk to our principals about that this week. Thank you for sharing that wonderful idea. And now, I think kindly post, is this?
Dr. Brabran, go ahead with Megan, Rachna, Megan, Karen, Laura, Jane, and we're done.
So, I'll keep going. Tell me when to stop. The governor made indoor mask a mandatory action. Will FCPS use the state mandate to require all students and staff to wear them? Yes, we will mandate it unless designated otherwise with the exceptions we listed, and we'll bring that policy so the board can vote. If you, if you want more, if you want less, will be a board decision. And I want to just underlie on all of this. Every part of this return to school can't be on the show just one person. It needs to be the superintendent, the school board, the county executive, the county chair, our entire community, principals, teachers. We need to figure out what return to school, what's best for Fairfax County. And even as we pursue the in-person and virtual, we said we can pivot on the in-person, we can phase in-person if things begin to deteriorate between now and September 8th. So, we still have room and flexibility as we move forward and return to school to be nimble to the situation. Screening protocol for students, teachers, and bus drivers? I think we're talking about the health questionnaire for our teacher and staff, and Teresa, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure, the screening protocol is the same for students, teachers, bus drivers, any visitors to the building, and that questionnaire is going to be available to everybody, and anybody should be screened, and everybody should be screened on a daily basis who's coming to schools. Visitors will be limited, and visitors will be asked these screenings prior to coming to their scheduled appointment into the buildings.
Thank you. All right, the next part, if. Megan, were you the one about mixing Virex using a respirator? Please be sure all OSHA protections are followed. I will follow up with Jeff about OSHA and the mixing of Virex using a respirator. Sorry about that. The next section is instruction. I just want to.
Two more questions left before our cutoff. I want to make sure board members who asked before and indicated are heard, so if we just bear with us here, we have one from Karen and one from Laura Jane in the chat So, right after the OSHA question that you just addressed?
Okay, I'm looking. Karen Kees, Karen Kees-Gamarra asked about people, staff members who may present a health concern as a basis to work virtually. The questions sent to staff are based on ADA rather than the state definition or rather than the definition provided by state authorities, which only reference an underlying condition. Clarify this for our staff members. John, is this something you or Catherine, Carol could speak to?
Sure, so, individuals should, if they have an underlying health condition, should submit the ADA paperwork irregardless of what it may be. The EER folks will take a look at that information, and if the claim does qualify for an accommodation, carry that out. If not, we can look at the possibility of providing a telework accommodation using our telework policy that we're working to get approved. that we're working to get approved at this point in time.
So I just want to clarify, it seems to be a slightly different standard from our state officials. And I think what staff members are asking is which one are we following? ADA is typically what we would have been doing. But under COVID, it seems that there is other guidance from the state. If I'm correct, I could be wrong, so please clarify.
So we are, we are looking at the requests based upon the standards provided by the CDC for COVID. So individuals that meet one of those criteria should complete the ADA request.
Do I keep going?
We had that one final question, Laura James.
What's the mechanism to trigger a fully virtual start? What are the COVID numbers that would merit that? These are questions we've worked with. The governor said earlier this week that he would continue to monitor the phasing. So obviously, the governor, if he switched back to phase two, we would be completely limited in doing a virtual start and we would have to phase in our in-person. So certainly the governor's phasing will have an impact. But I want to be clear with this board. We can phase in our in-person, all virtual, we can do what we want to do. The governor asked us to reopen schools and he presented a phase plan. You're in phase three, which allows all students to return. We provided a set of scenarios of which we've given the community choice to return all virtual or in-person. And if in-person, once we've taken the final decision, families on July 15th, even as we build in-person, we can phase the in-person in if necessary as we approach September 8th. So those will be my comments there. And then, you know, as COVID goes up or down, we could have people coming back in or coming less in who had selected the in-person option. I guess I will switch now to the instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Bravon. Go ahead.
Yeah. If we can go to that. Just a reminder, there was some discussion, some feedback from some board members and some principals about bell schedule. We posted it a month ago. There were some people offering some other options. The reality is, nobody honestly prefers the last slot. But my recommendation remains today. We need to follow through with the proposed bell schedule that we shared over a month ago with both our community and staff. That is what they've used to make decisions. They had the original schedule, they made daycare arrangements and decisions about returning based on this. Athletics and after-school activities, which remain a community thing to do. Agree that we can do them in a COVID arena. We want kids in this economic crisis that we also face. Many of our parents in high school take a job after school. And we also have heard so much about childcare, which I'll speak to a bit in a minute, a bit more. But we need to allow one tool to be our high school and middle school students to be able to be home as childcare supporters for elementary. This bell schedule accomplishes that. It remains my recommendation. Next. It also remains my recommendation, there was some discussion about the traditional A B block schedule versus an eight-period day. We have landed on an A B block schedule to remain in place for the fall. It's four blocks. It's about 80 to 85 minutes. It's only about three transitions today. There's longer instructional periods and fewer transitions. That's the bubble piece that Ms. McLaughlin was talking about. The challenge is seeing a teacher only one day per week when they're in-person if we're in, and a two-day person. So the default right now will be that they'll see their teacher one day per week and then they'll have the other set of classes on the second day. Of course, if conditions improve, we'll be able to provide that more. Of course, that's the same for virtual. Virtual, you would see the teacher, the specific individual teacher, two days a week in a block, but for more time. If we can go to the next schedule or next slide, programs that will be offered. You can see in-person and online for elementary. We're going to do AAP, advanced courses in math, ESOL, immersion specials and sped. Again, our commitment will, it will offer at middle school, electives, immersion, ESOL and sped. And in high school, all of our required courses will be offered in-person and online, AP and IB, ESOL, sped, person, special sped. We do have a note for IB and electives that some of the offerings will be dependent on student enrollment and to provide the staffing in each setting for each course. We're going to do our very best to maximize choice, even as we're asking our families to make choices that may impact scheduling some. We will have some scheduling challenges. That's embedded in asking folks to choose between a virtual and in-person option. But we're going to do our level best to provide as much of that existing choice as possible. Some of the courses we won't be able to offer, which is another question, if we can go to the next slide. Online or in-person at elementary? We're not going to provide chorus for the first semester. We'll revisit that at second semester. For middle schools, unavailable online or in-person. That's going to be based on that student enrollment request and the availability of the virtual teacher. We're going to do our best to be as flexible as possible. Same thing for high school with their courses. There are some courses for high school online that we already know on July 13th we will not be able to offer online. Ceramics, the Global STEM Challenges at Edison, firefighting, jewelry, construction, electrical construction, culinary arts and theater design and production. So those are the courses not offered online. The next slide. Student schedules has been a big question about determining the days in person. It's almost, it's almost, it's almost right down the middle. Somebody else will know the number. I think it's like 50.2%. And so A through K will attend Tuesday and Thursday if you're doing the Tuesday in-person selection. And last names L through Z will be Wednesday through, Wednesday and Friday. If you've got families with different last names, you'll follow the schedule of the eldest child in your household. And then adjust as necessary for special programs, being mindful of transportation limitations. Family that has a hardship, we will do our very best to accommodate. We just ask those families that have a hardship case to call principal and the principal will work on that and we will work with them. One more piece on instruction, two more pieces to share, then I'll take a break. In-person and online, at all levels, we're going to have the same instructional time when you combine asynchronous and in-person or face-to-face minutes. Teachers will be planning together on those Mondays to help align content pacing and assessment. We want those to be as similar as possible, even though there's some activities that can't be replicated as easily online. To ensure parity for elementary work time, that's come up. We'll be asked to provide office hours to help and asynchronous students or at-home asynchronous students and spend some additional time with collaborative teams. So some are, on their at-home day or the asynchronous day, may get help from a elementary teacher to do some of their activity. And they'll be asked to support collaborative teams and helping resources. So glad to see that additional help. And I know that was a question many staff members had asked for. The next slide, if we could, and then I'll stop, is this whole pivoting we talked about. But just want to say it again, if there's a state mandated closure or phase guidance change, we'll implement a flexible model, a full-time online for all students. That means no students will be back in the building. We'd have staff access for critical purposes. We would deliver our instruction through the enhanced distance learning practices. And it would reflect our lessons learned from spring 2020. We did struggle for two weeks, but as I shared yesterday with our national folks, that we soared for two months. And I'm proud of the work that this staff did to address the issues and move forward. And we learned a lot that we're going to incorporate as we go to the fall. And that's going to include expanded digital curriculum resources, expanded staff training. And students will be able to use their existing links for the full-time online learning. That was a question you already asked. They'll get regularly trained on it if they're in-person, so there won't be a waiting game. And then schedules, as we talked about, they'll mirror the same schedules for students enrolled in virtual online learning. So we'll be all doing the A B block together. I'm going to pause and take any questions.
Go ahead, Dr. Bravon. You'll see from the 2:43 point. I believe Melanie's question was for the board, so you can start with Laura Jane.
All right. Laura Jane at 2:43 asked, our families cannot handle a change at this late day. Even though I remain hugely concerned, can we do that a bit? So Laura Jane, what we are doing, I'm working with Jeff and Francine and Marty. We're going to look at those elementary runs and try to be as efficacious as possible in doing them. We might be able to shave off a few minutes here and there, but I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver on July 13th. We're going to get the data and we're going to look at the runs. Jeff, do you want to say anything else to make sure I'm capturing that right briefly?
No, you captured it right, Dr. Bravon.
All right, that's pretty brief. Thank you. Melanie Marin asks, can we, oh, I'm sorry. What are our Academy CTE certifications? Why are Academy CTE certifications not listed? Why are Academy CTE certification courses not listed? They will have an impact. They were, they were not listed if they were not going to be closed. Dr. Presidio, do you, can you better answer that question maybe for me?
Yeah, Dr. Bravon, I think Ms. Corbin Sanders is asking why we didn't specifically name the CTE courses on the slide where we said courses and programs that would be offered. And the reason that we didn't name them specifically is those are elective courses, which we did name on that slide. It's a subset of specialized elective courses. And again, it's our intention to offer as many of those courses as possible, again, based on student enrollment interest and in teacher alignment. So we'll have a better idea about that in a few weeks after our schools are farther along in the master schedule building process. But we're not eliminating any of those courses. We're attempting to offer as many of those as possible.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Carl Frisch asked about, you know, parents being concerned, or many parents being concerned about the quality of that face-to-face distance learning in our platforms, how we improving what we offer? And how are we making sure that we have the bandwidth for all possible scenarios? Marty, I know you've spoken to this a little bit, but could you just speak to it again? I know you really got some guarantee collective commitments from both Google and Blackboard we've been using. And can you speak a little bit more to that, please?
Sure, certainly. So we will be using our current tools, our current virtual tools of Blackboard Collaborate Ultra and Google Meet as we go into return to school in the fall. We're working on now trying to create some forms to help students organize their links a bit better. And so we'll be talking with our principals who have put some of these forms into place and see what we can do as a district, as a school division to make this easier for students. We're currently in the process of putting an RFP out and developing the RFP for a new virtual tool with the understanding that Blackboard Collaborate Ultra will not be part of our tool of choice come the end of this coming school year. So we will have an RFP on the street. We will then make a choice for a new virtual tool for the coming school year, hopefully by November. But the current tools are what we will be using in the fall. With regard to bandwidth, Blackboard Collaborate Ultra is a cloud-based tool. And so as the demand for the tool increases, it then goes out across the network to meet that demand. So unlike what we had in the fall, or excuse me, in the spring with our on-premise servers, they were not able to meet that demand because they were not cloud-based. Blackboard Collaborate Ultra is again cloud-based and will be able to meet increased student demand.
So Marty, just to finalize that, the problem in the spring when we had the issue with load was with Blackboard 24/7 Learn based on a server. We will not be using that to do our face-to-face links with kids when we're doing that virtual face-to-face instruction. Or even when our in-person kids may need to use face-to-face. We'll be using Collaborate Ultra. It's on the cloud. There's no load issues and Blackboard has assured you that there will be no load issues. In fact, they've had over 800,000 folks on their cloud without problems. Is that correct?
Yes, both Blackboard and Google have assured us that they will be able to meet the load needs for students accessing sessions at the same time. So again, they will be able to meet that need. We don't have any or foresee any issues at this time.
I know it's an issue though, because it happened this spring and people are concerned. They don't want a replay of what happened. And I appreciate your leadership and work with those companies to make sure that they will be able to handle the load regardless of the scenario that we are in.
And to be clear one more time, again, the reason why we had those issues in the spring, it was because we were using the Blackboard Learn integration. We are not using the Blackboard Learn integration. We have not used that integration to access sessions since the spring. We then switched quickly to Blackboard Collaborate Ultra with direct secure links. And again, that is what we'll be using in the fall. So we will not be using the Learn integration. We will not see those same issues that we saw in the spring.
I think, oh, I'm sorry, Carl. You also asked about many parents have indicated needing pacing guides to assist with asynchronous learning. What are we doing to help with parents and students on their independent learning days? And how will these days be tied to time in a classroom? Sloan, this is a great one for you. And we just shared that other nugget about how online folks are going to help during asynchronous. Can you talk a little bit about this question?
Yeah, so in addition to having some opportunities for students on asynchronous days to get some direct teacher support, we are developing additional curriculum materials and resources to support the teachers with planning activities for asynchronous days. Again, each of the individual grade level teams at each of our schools will ultimately determine which resources that they want to use with their students. So I think the best thing for parents in that situation would be to collaborate with the classroom teachers to get that information. But we're also adopting, thanks to the board's approval of the COVID budget, the inclusion of digital curriculum resources that are more student self-paced materials that can be used in grades K through 8 in math and grades K through 6 in reading. So that's going to give parents some additional supports where their students will have the ability to interact with those curriculum materials. We'll need less direct support from parents or adult supervision in the home.
Thank you, Sloan. Rochna asked about, or Ms. Heizer, my apologies, asked about, please consider office hours on Monday.
Rochna's fine.
I'm sorry, Rochna. Or other time, perhaps by virtual teachers to help students have more of a touch point. We are looking at doing that. We are looking at doing that. You also asked about AAP for middle school. Sloan, can you talk a little bit about AAP for middle school?
Yes, I apologize. I think I omitted that from the slide. So thanks for bringing that to our attention. We are going to continue to offer AAP Level 4 in middle school.
Ms. Darnak Kofax, when did you change your mind on the eighth period? It has been a constant thing that you would shift for if you're only seeing your teacher once per week. How is that best? Would virtual, where you see the teacher each four times a week, would this not be best educationally? So what do the Edison students do? This is a full-time program now. They don't- This is a full-time program now, they don't have a choice, how's this been communicated? The Edison kids, now that's about those that are online trying to access the STEM Academy, not those who would be able face-to-face in person and still be able to get the Academy.
Okay, I see that. But, um, yeah, so the other ones, though, they don't have a choice. And that's a program that they opted into and it's a four-year opt-in. So it's going to have to be walked back if they have a choice. Um, you know, if they want to stay virtual and then they are going to have to get out of that program. And that will be particularly difficult for, say, a sophomore level or junior level child.
That's a good, that's a good heads up for us. Let me see what we can do to work on that. On the eighth period day, I, I certainly will say to you that I, this one was a, a struggle. We kind of went back and forth. But as we got closer to today, looking at everything, listening to our principals and DSS about scheduling, looking at health information about restrictions and keeping kids in bubbles. At the end of the day, I've leaned, uh, and have recommended the A B block is just better for making sure the in-person works. Now remember too, that the virtual then doing an A B means the virtual will, you'll see your teachers virtually twice. You'll see your in-person each teacher once. It was going to be four and two, now it's two and one. But it's also true, Ms. Darnak Kofax, that when we add up-
Explain that one more time, so I, I'm confused there now too.
Sloan, why don't you take a shot at it? I think you're a better explainer sometimes than I am on some of this instructional stuff.
So I, I, I think the difference between the two schedules, um, you know, they both have their, their benefits and their challenges. The eight-period day schedule would allow for each of our high school students to see each of their, uh, teachers two days per week. Um, on an A B block schedule, high school and middle school students are only going to see each of their class teachers one day per week. So originally, when we were discussing the eight-period day, we were doing that at a time when, um, you know, the governor had just ordered, uh, us to reopen schools. And the direction was, uh, try to get students into school as frequently as possible. And an eight-period day certainly would be the preferential schedule to do that. Now, as we're hearing additional concerns in the community and we're seeing, you know, the infection rates, um, certainly around the country go up, um, I think those, uh, you know, those circumstances have changed. And now we're offering the A B schedule really as a way to make sure that we can do the most to protect the health and safety of our students.
So that doesn't change, wait, wait, let me, sorry, Dr. Brabran. Um, Dr. Presidio, does that change, though, the virtual option?
No, the, the virtual option will still be, um, period, you know, on an A B block schedule, it'll still be, you would see your teachers, uh, two days per week.
So the choice is virtual, you, you get to see your teachers. Say that again now, not for-
So, so no matter what schedule you're on, if a student chooses the virtual option, they will have more frequent contact with their teachers. So they'll have, uh, contact, uh, twice as much as the in-person students would have.
Right.
Tammy, Tammy, the way I'd say it, the ratio didn't change. Either, either version of an eight-period day or a block, you would see your teachers more in virtual than you would have an in-person. However, one of the things we looked at, like we said, it's the restriction of kids moving. But instructional time, some of our IS people and some of our principals, we were going to lose more instructional time in that eight-period day because of the transitions in person. So we wanted to maximize instruction, minimize movement across, uh, classes. And we think that in the end is the best sweet spot. Hopefully, if things get better and we get a vaccine sooner, we can have, and, and, and for teachers, for kids, um, and our principals and our schedulers, the, the A B block is the de facto standard. It's what kids are used to, it's what teachers are used for planning for, it's what principals and DSSs are used to scheduling. So all in all, I, I ended up landing on the A B and it is my recommendation that we move forward with the A B block.
So, but, but just for clarity though, the A B block only allows when you're in person, you see a teacher once a week. So my concern, I guess, is of those higher-level courses like an IB World History or AP Calculus. You're only going to see that teacher once a week in person, but then you'll have asynchronous the rest of the time.
That's right.
See them once, once.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for not answering your question very well at the beginning, my apologies.
And Dr. Brabran, it also preserves the Academy programs and the CTE opportunities for our kids that would not be able to do that otherwise.
We think we'll have less conflicts. We were going to explore some things with eight-period, but we think there'll be less conflicts. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you are correct with this, uh, A B block for transportation. There's still going to be some transportation challenges for Academy. I need to be very honest with all of you. Um, we're still working through that, but we, uh, we think there'll be less scheduled challenges. That's what our DSSs are telling us at both, uh, at, at the high school level, so.
All right, Dr. Brabran, uh, sorry, just to be respectful of, of everyone's question that we're online. Let's go back to our, uh, Mr. Questions here.
All right, what, what, what number am I on, I guess?
I am pulling up, so we have-
Now, Rajna has, "Consider changing half-days since those tend to fall on Wednesday or Fridays. Are these still needed given the Monday workday? Please consider changing the half-days."
The teacher workday half-days tend to fall, I believe, on Wednesdays or Fridays, the one in the schedule.
Oh, you're just saying, look at the calendar for how to get more instructional time.
Otherwise, it's going to disproportionately affect the Wednesday, Friday students as opposed to the Tuesday, Thursday students. And are those still really needed, the teacher workday half-days with the Monday? But at minimum, take a look at when they fall, so we're not having a bunch of Wednesdays get canceled half-day or shortened schedules half-days.
I, I, I think I get you. A couple of our half-days are on Fridays. Uh, we'll look at that, I, I don't have an answer for that today. We can look at that as we, uh, refine our calendar. Um, given, your point is given that we have Monday time, can we look at the half-days? We can go back and look at that.
In addition to the Monday time, if we don't want to use that Monday time for teachers, if we still want, need to have those other half-days, please balance them between the Tuesday, Thursday in-person students and the Wednesday, Friday in-person students. So we're not having all in foul on Friday when students are only there two days a week, Wednesday, Friday, and they only see those Friday teachers once a week.
I, I hear you, I hear your request, we can look at that. Um, your question also about Monday intervention with busing. We're still working through, uh, our Monday intervention and our busing, uh, piece. And I think that, that question is best in another return to school update. Um, I don't have that for you, uh, today, but we can get it for you. Uh, Ms. Sanders, you asked about more details on professional development. Yes, that will be in a future update, um, uh, for you. Uh, Sloan has a team already, uh, across departments looking at that professional development. Uh, Rajna, you asked about the pivot in more detail. Yeah, I mean, uh, we can continue to do that. Uh, again, uh, Marty, do you want to share a little bit more about the pivot or Sloan? Um, and maybe I didn't capture it as well in my answer, that maybe one of you two could.
I think maybe just, uh, the, one of the things that I said at the end, um, when we were discussing this earlier is that we really want to make sure during, um, the dates leading up to the first day of school, that we're able to work with our teachers and support them in reaching out to their students and their parents. And basically doing like a technology orientation to make sure that the students and the parents are familiar with the technology that's going to be used, whether students are attending in-person or online. Um, and that, I think, will help a lot. Uh, we obviously did not have that luxury when we had to close in March. And we didn't even have the infrastructure in place, uh, uh, to, to make that pivot. So our students will have the devices. Um, our teachers will have the time to set up all of the links in their virtual classroom space. And we're hoping that teachers will be able to do those virtual orientations with students and parents. And I think all of those things together, along with the lessons that we learned in the spring, um, are going to position us really well to have, um, the ability to pivot very quickly should we need to do so.
Thanks, Sloan. Um, uh, we also had Ms. Corbett Sanders, "Given that online and in-person will be the same, can we provide our families the opportunity to change selections at semester break? We, we, we really still are asking for the year. Again, we have said in our FAQs, Ms. Corbett Sanders, if conditions dramatically improve, we will look at a system change. Uh, but we have to be careful that we've asked our staff, trying to give staff choice, and they're making a choice for the year, where we let everybody come back to in-person and we don't have the staffing to do it. Um, so that, that, that's the concern there. Uh, "Talk about technology," Rajna asks, uh, "Providing this level of online school? What assurance is the technology will work? Can we ask teachers to have their cameras on for virtual teaching and especially for IEP meetings?" Um, well, we talked about the two companies that we're working with to provide the, uh, technology and that it will work, that the technology issue this spring was a load issue. And it was also the incorrect creation of the links. The links will be created during professional development in August by teachers, as it needed to be in the first place in March. And we will not be asking kids to be on their face-to-face learning, uh, on, uh, on Blackboard 24/7 Learn, which had load issues. So that is the assurance, we're not going to put them in that. Um, as far as the IEP for virtual teaching and cameras, I don't know, Teresa, can you, uh, speak to that, uh, question about that?
So we've certainly, um, after initial glitches, have worked out much of the Blackboard Collaborate, uh, problems that were at the beginning of virtual learning. And many of our IEP meetings right now are happening through Blackboard Collaborate Ultra. So I don't anticipate having additional concerns moving into the next year.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
I don't think I answered my question about requiring the cameras on versus making sure that they work. There's a difference between, there's, in some IEP meetings, parents were often told that, um, cameras were required to be off. So it's, it's a difference between can the technology work versus can they be required to be on so we can actually have a little bit of a collaborative atmosphere?
That's something we can go back to look at if we've not been clear. You, you feel that's something that has caused some, uh, concerns among parents you've heard from?
A lot of parents, especially in IEP meetings of trying to even share documents and be collaborative on developing IEPs when everyone's camera was off. And it was hard to see faces, read lips, share documents, all of those pieces. It's just, we need to be much more collaborative with how we're doing these meetings.
Let me bring that, that back at RTS meeting, uh, uh, that's helpful feedback and I'll bring it in one of our next updates.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Brabran. Um, before, if you don't mind proceeding, I'm going to just do a time check, folks. It is past our end time. Um, we have, I'm going to give the board two options for how we proceed, given that I'm hearing a lot of feedback that folks want to speak and this and that. So Plan A would be we proceed with the miscellaneous section that Dr. Brabran will present right now. Uh, move along with questions as we have been, he'll answer the questions and that's it. We will move to our SRNR conversation. Plan B, uh, we will continue with the miscellaneous section. We will not ask questions in this format. Each board member will have one minute opportunity to speak. They can ask questions or provide their, uh, insights as to the direction we're moving in. Uh, both of those timelines will put us at around 3:45, putting us about 30 minutes, uh, behind. Luckily, we saved a little bit of time in the SRNR, so I'm hoping it'll work out. But we do have experts waiting, we're not aware if they can stay with us past that point. So, uh, I'm going to put it up to a vote, we have Plan A and Plan B, okay? So, um, board members who are in favor of Plan A, kindly put your hands up. Actually, everyone put your hands down first, I see that people's hands are up. All right, everyone, Rajna, please put your hand down.
I'm sorry, is there a visual we can see of what we're voting on, Ms. Heizer?
I can reiterate, it's really processed. Plan A is we're going to move forward with this presentation without asking questions. Um, and having, oh, sorry, no. Plan A will be to move forward with the presentation and ask questions in the, in the fashion we have been, but without further discussion, we won't have time. Plan B will be to move forward with the presentation. We will not ask questions using the chat, but each board member will have one minute opportunity to use it as they choose. Okay?
Ms. Heizer, if I may, Ms. Heizer, if I may, since Plan B is the opportunity to ask questions regarding the miscellaneous, um, section, and also to provide just general feedback, which we have not been able to do, we need to increase the time a little bit so that we have both of these things accomplished. One minute is a little bit aggressive.
Um, I do not disagree. My concern is that we have guests waiting that we're expecting to start at 3:15, and it is 3:15 now.
I definitely understand, but we do need to have some feedback from that, perhaps two minutes.
Okay, what we can do- What we can do is we'll take the first vote. And if, if folks decide to move with Plan B, we can vote on whether it's one minute or two minutes and we'll move along. Um, all right, so folks who want to move forward with the presentation and do the questions format and, and then move into the SRNR conversation, Plan A, please raise your hand. Okay, that is only two of us. Plan B, everyone put your hands down. If you're in favor of Plan B.
I'm sorry, Ms. Heizer, you do have to acknowledge who raised their hand because the public can't see that.
Sure, I mean, it's not an official vote, but Ms., Ms. Marin and, and myself were in favor of Plan A. Plan B, we have Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. McCarskey, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Dr. Anderson. Okay, the majority, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Heizer, and Ms. Kez Gomara. Um, so in that case, we can, again, guys, so this is going to put us at 3:45, right? If we're going to do that, if we're going to decide two minutes, that's no less than four o'clock, right? Just around. So if that's, so Plan A, one minute, Plan B, two minutes. Uh, if you're, everyone put your hands down, Rajna, please, put your hand down. All right, if you're in favor of Plan A for one minute, raise your hand. Okay, that's Ms. Tolan and myself. Um, if you're in favor of Plan B. All right, everyone, so that is everyone else, basically. Um, so, uh, we'll move forward with Plan B. Um, that puts us at no earlier than four o'clock with next steps. Um, I'm going to tell our staff, but we'll proceed now with the presentation. So Dr. Brabran, please go ahead.
All right, if we could just put it back up, uh, the next section and last section. Family engagement remains important for return to school. We're going to do, uh, many things, including training for families on technology tools and content learning. You heard us talk about like family orientations for technology. Continue the two-way communication, continue to have parent liaisons, support us. We've, we've had hourly money already to help them reach out even for families now as we're making, families are making choices. Workshops around topics of interest that are important. Really excited, we can show you and I can put in a Brabran briefing, information on United Language and this Talking Points app that really put in the hands of teachers the ability to do almost instantaneous translations, in addition to using our phone line responders and interpreters and translators and parent liaison. So we'll send you some info on that, really cool. And we really want to get teachers to start to use it and administrators, anybody really, to use it even more often. Kudos to Rich Polio and, uh, his team for, and Kathleen Waltz and her team for working together and make that happen. Um, access to free consultations with the Parent Resource Center also. Um, next slide, special education. We are exploring the possibility, students with disabilities attending specialized services full-time, four days a week. We are also committed to exploring the, uh, possibility of a soft opening or a transition program for these kids before September 8th. And I'll have more on that for a, uh, a future return to school, um, briefing. The next slide is I want to share something very exciting with you because we know one of the issues has been employee childcare. What can Fairfax County, under its own, uh, parameters and powers, do to help our employees who are still trying to make a decision? I will be sending a letter out later today to provide, uh, our, our best thinking that we will have an option for childcare for FCPS employees with, um, school-aged children who are attending Fairfax County Public Schools. It's under development and we're going to work to roll it out in the weeks ahead. The option would provide four days of instruction to our FCPS students, grades pre-K to six. So FCPS kids in an elementary school who are children of FCPS staff that attend our schools. And we need that staff not to have childcare, prevent them from coming back and being able to deliver in-person instruction. So it's going to be school-based- So it's going to be school-based staff like teachers, IAs, administrators in schools, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers. If you don't have those bus drivers, you don't have kids in schools. And, and other FCPS staff that support schools that are in schools all the time, psychologists and social workers. We're giving them the opportunity to have their children, if they're pre-K through six, come four days a week. We need to just look at fall enrollment. Our early estimates based on what we're seeing with staff asking about childcare is that we can do this with no issues. But we've got to work through it to be sure. And we would work at looking at local options to explore childcare on Mondays. Which would really allow coverage for our employees who are in Fairfax County to get their kids covered five days a week. Very excited, we thought out of the box. And this is within our own existing powers and parameters to make happen. Next slide, sports and activities. We're in phase, we've, we've started with phase two conditioning and agility. And there are plans to go to the phase three guidance as appropriate. And Bill could fill us in on that or Francis a little bit more. The, the big news is, is later this week, on our July 5th deadline for families and staff, the VHSL Executive Committee also is meeting to really discuss the plans for the fall sports season. We believe they will delay the start of the fall season. We also believe, again, still wait and see, nothing's for sure. We have to wait, we have to be flexible in the, the, these moments. If the fall season is not able to be to play, to be played, there are contingency plans to adjust winter and spring seasons to accommodate fall sports later in the year. And planning for the different scenarios of the fall season is in place. Our own planning, we're planning for different scenarios. Is it all sports or some sports? But given all of that going on right now, we're postponing band camp, camp until August 17th. And we'll have more information on the fall marching band season by August 3rd. Of course, if we have updates earlier than that, we'll certainly bring them. But these are the dates we have right now. And wanted to share that with you for sports and activities. Next slide, please. Clubs and after-school, we're going to, we know how important these clubs and after-school are in our middle school after-program. Clubs may meet in person and virtually at the completion of a regular school day. So we're going to keep our clubs going. Based on appropriate protocols, we'll have accommodations to allow clubs to remain active. Our middle school after-school program will follow similar protocols appropriate to the population to allow for continuity of programming. And we've done just a great job with, with our MSASP VIP program. Over the summer, providing synchronous and asynchronous activities virtually. And we've really seen a large number of rising seventh graders participate in that activity. And just really pleased that, that that's happening, that VIP programs happening at Liberty, Carson, Thero, South County, and Sandberg. Really, really pleased with that work and our teams and staff. Finally, return to school enrollment, a reminder, the enrollment form, we asked families to complete it by Wednesday, July 15th. Go to www.fcpse.edu/Enroll2020. We provided a lot of additional information today. This will all be updated and shared publicly. And I appreciate everything you all are doing to support me and our leadership team as we work. And we will stay committed to keeping you and the community informed every step of the way as we plan for a safe and responsible return to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand and staff for putting these materials together and doing this presentation. At this point in time, I would like to start calling on our school board members for final questions and comments. And I believe we'll be timing this at two minutes. So Eileen and Bev, if you can help us out with that, that would be great. So the first speaker that I have is Ms. Darnak Kofax.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand and your team. I know you've been working hard and twisting yourself into pretzels. But I am concerned, I sat on the task force on Thursday and we didn't talk about the change, about the, the going from the eight to the four period until I heard it today. I mean, I guess I heard it over the weekend, there were some calls made. But I really feel like if we're so concerned about passing times to the extent that we're limiting students to see their teachers in person, their subject teachers only once per week. I, I just want to put this out there for my colleagues. If we would consider the option of full-time virtual learning as a soft opening, the way Montgomery County is, is to do that first. I, I can't imagine, as I, as Dr. Presidio said, you're seeing them once a week, virtually you're seeing them every day. I feel like there's still too many questions and not enough good, solid answers. And not just from teachers, but from families and staff. We've been asking this, the if-this-what-then questions, just like the one that I proposed. I, I, I think it bears repeating that if a student or staff is tested positive and results are not available, no letter will be sent home from the school until an alternative diagnosis is ruled out. We don't know the amount of testing that's being done. There's no proactive testing being done. And what is going to happen then to those students while we wait to see what that testing is? And, and so I've got letters upon letters from parents who are asking how that's going to happen. Also, could virtual, the default be virtual as opposed to not in-person? And also, I believe the flipped bell schedule, I'm not sure exactly what I'm voting on. I need to be clear about that. I would like some clarity on that. Thank you.
Let me just, let me be clear with the board. I mean, the board can make a decision to direct me to pursue any of the three scenarios. So if that's what happens, but I would say, I would say to this board today, we need, I would make the decision if you're going to change direction in the scenarios so that we don't continue to go down this direction. The information, so that would be the, the bottom line. I, I would like, we would need direction as soon as possible if you were asking us to only pursue Scenario 1 with the phase in. So I, I'll just say that right out of the gate. I would need to know that very, very, very soon. And as far as the, the eight period and AB block, I, I've been transparent. I admit, Ms. Darnak Kofax, it had been part of the earlier task force. There, there, as we met with principals and teachers, there was just more concerns. And as we looked at the health piece, more concerns about the transition time, the scheduling. And so we, we ultimately came back to the AB block. And I don't know if I, I hope I've answered all your questions.
Yes, and Dr. Braybrand, I will just say, this is something I'm putting out there for discussion because of my level of comfort. I may get no support from other board members, but I just, I have to speak for the thousand, not thousands, but hundreds of letters I've got from both teachers and families and staff who just feel at this point, two days, they have to make their decision. And they are very concerned with questions that we've been asking for weeks. And I know it's not always on you. I know that.
I understand. I, I, the board needs this, I respect this, the need for the board to have this conversation. And I want to reiterate, I want to partner with the board and this community to do return to school in a right way that honors the community and honors the board. And that's going to be my plan. I brought you three approaches. I asked for consensus on moving forward. There was a consensus to do two and three with choice. If the board is going in a different direction, I would need to be directed so very promptly so that we would make the appropriate adjustments. So thank you.
Dr. Braybrand, if you don't mind, one of, thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax for putting forth an idea for consideration by the board. I will be asking our colleagues as they are making their comments and their questions to give feedback to that. And how, and if it's determined that there are many people who want to have a reconsideration, then perhaps we will take that vote at the end. But we did have a vote that directed Dr. Braybrand to explore options two and three. So I'm just asking my colleagues as they're making their commentary to just speak to any level of support that they may or may not have for this option that, for the idea that Ms. Darnak Kofax is suggesting.
Dr. Anderson, I'm, this is Ratsna, I'm really uncomfortable having two minutes to speak to something without time for a robust conversation and then taking a vote. This is a huge change and we don't, I mean, I would want to get Health Department guidance on, will their health conditions mandate this? I don't, I don't feel comfortable making this change or even voting on it. And I don't mind speaking to it, but I don't, I'm not comfortable voting on it right now.
Ms. Saisma Hauser, thank you for that. I will see how people respond to see if we need to move to a vote. That's, I'd like for folks to speak to it during their commentary.
I took myself off of you.
Next on our list is Maken McLaughlin and then followed by Karen Corbett Sanders.
Well, I hope the superintendent's still listening because I know he had to take himself off camera. I do not support what Ms. Darnak Kofax has said. We are two days from a deadline. We've had more than 50% of our families responding to what they want. So at this point, I don't want to waste the little two minutes I have speaking to that new proposal. Dr. Braybrand, my question to you is that we know after the regrettable problems we had with the distance learning rollout in the spring, that one of the things that a large operation needs to have in place is a project management plan. So can you please let the board know, do you have a project management plan? And when are you going to provide it to the board?
We have our, we have a project management team through the task force with individual teams working on specific deliverables. And I can work on finding a time to share with you that framework. I do see that as, you know, that is, that is, that is something that I can review with our team and figure out the right way to share with you. Some of the operational details are still being worked on as we work with our principal work groups to finalize. We are building something from scratch and not every I is dotted or T is crossed. In six days from the governor's phased announcement, we brought you three scenarios. And a week later, brought a, a decision to move forward. And we've been working as hard as possible to do that. So what, we can provide you the outlines of what we, we are working with. We have a project management team at the leadership team level. We've integrated them into our associations. And I'll be glad to provide you a framework of what the deliverables look like by each of those work streams.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, respectfully. I don't think that's what a best practice project management plan is. But I won't have time to be able to talk about this, but it is something the board is very well aware that we've got to have in place. It's not about the details, it's your plan on how to execute. And that starts at the macro level. And I think that's part of why some of this work to date has seemed very scattershot and piecemeal as opposed to starting at the top and then come flowing down. The board needs to know this and the public needs to know what this structure looks like. So I'm not thinking of teams and framework, I'm thinking about who's in charge and then who is delegated to oversee each of these massive operations. So we'll just have to talk more offline. I do want to thank you for the block schedule proposal. It does follow educational best practice for students to have time to not only learn the lessons, but engage with the teacher. And 39 minutes is when we were doing the eight periods, absolutely did not allow for quality instruction. And it did increase infection exposure rates. So that again is why I think what you've put in front of us is the best way to go.
Thank you.
This is Karen Corbett Sanders.
Sure, hold on one second till I'm online. Great, thank you. First, Dr. Braybrand, I very much appreciate you moving towards the block schedule. I think that it does address the increased amount of learning time before teachers. It reduces risk of transitioning in hallways and certainly does preserve the options for our academy programs. I am a little concerned about how we're going to do assessments in this environment. And I would encourage you that our assessments be done in the virtual environment where possible so that we preserve the learning time, the instructional time before teachers to the greatest extent possible. That is something that Mr. Anabudo put in his chat stream. I would also ask that we focus on making sure that in the virtual environment, we engage our students and have some sort of mechanism that if students aren't engaging online, we reach out to them proactively. Regarding your childcare piece, I love your ideas. Is there one additional piece, which is can we provide a tuition waiver for those staff members who live outside of the county and whose children attend our schools so that they're not having to pay tuition? That would also, I think, encourage people to provide that in-person experience. And then last, I do want to speak to Ms. Darnak Kofax's recommendation. The recommend, what we have before us today creates the opportunity for choice. It allows for that virtual experience for those people that want the virtual experience while at the same time preserving the option for people that want to be in school for part of the time. They are able to do that. Additionally, what I understand you are required to provide to the state is a full-fledged plan that talks about how we would pivot depending on how the conditions change. So based on the current conditions, we would do what is currently on, in our plan. If at some point, I need to finish this because of the latter piece. If at some point, there is a change where conditions worsen, then we would pivot to a full virtual piece. If conditions increase, that plan would require a more in-person instruction. And so this plan is actually allowing us to pivot each direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
With all due respect, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders wants a response to her.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, the, there were several pieces there. Was the, the specific thing you wanted a response on now was what?
Well, there are several pieces. One is the plan that we present to the state requires us to show how we pivot either with, if the conditions get better or if the conditions worsen. And so you're going to have to provide both that flexibility in our plan and what those metrics are, correct?
Right, yes, we're going to, yes, yes.
And then the other was, would you consider a tuition waiver?
The tuition waiver, I'm sorry, it's just a lot of things today. The tuition waiver we've looked at before, and if you all ask us to, we can bring back. Costing is one of the issues. We think there would be a high demand and a potential, you know, cost of revenue not gotten. The other thing would be the impact on the capacity. We, we, we know our numbers for what our FCPS employees who have kids in schools look like. Outside of our system, those numbers could be higher. I'm not ready today to make that promise outside of our, outside of our scope. But we could go back and look at it and try to give you an idea of what both capacity and cost would look like.
Thank you.
We, we've done a lot to create this and I appreciate that you love it. This is as out of the box as we've been. And we can look at the, the tuition out of, of county, but there's a, there's a money piece and a capacity. We'd have to bring you both and, and let the board decide whether that was worth the additional flexibility for some of our teachers who don't have kids in Fairfax.
Dr. Braybrand, I listed, I'm so sorry, I've listed that recommendation as an item for us to determine as a board whether or not we're going to give you directions. for us to determine as a board whether or not we're going to give you directions, direction to proceed and follow up and do the research on that. So we will reconnect to that at the end of this section.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, do we want to add that to our next up list?
Not quite yet. If you could just go ahead and continue with your speakers, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cohen.
Thanks, I really appreciate it. With all due respect to my colleague, when we, she said that the choice that we gave gives everyone a choice, it doesn't though. I mean, what we're seeing now is pretty significant building level inconsistencies among teacher choice and, and parent choice. And so, you know, one of my big concerns is we look at, we're still waiting for guidance when we look at hotspots on the map. We look at Bailey's, we look at Braddock, we have huge outbreaks in those areas and I don't see a building level plan yet for what the mitigation strategies are and if we're even able to open buildings. I am still very concerned about sick leave for teachers who are trying to take the in-person option, even if they're forced to take the in-person option or a leave without, a leave of absence. You know, their risk is significantly higher, obviously, than a person who's choosing the virtual option. So I'm concerned that we're not giving them more sick leave because that's great to have the CARES Act piece, but if we really think that folks are only going to be COVID, you know, possible one time during this year, I think that's probably not a realistic expectation. So I join my colleague in saying that if we can't get these health questions answered, then we don't have any business opening in person. I understand the staff is killing themselves to try to get this right and get it there. And my big frustration, to be candid, has been with the Health Department because I think you all need more answers than you are being given about how we do this safely. And so I am incredibly frustrated to just feel like at every pass, we are asking, what are the numbers? What makes sense for how you would close a building? How you would open it? What does it look like on a class level? And we are not getting the answers from the health team. So that's where I stand.
Dr. Braybrand, do you want to comment on that or?
I, I think it's important for me to continue to listen to more, let me just make one quick comment though. You can either, you, you, actually, I'm gonna continue to listen to the board and then I'll make a couple of comments in a little bit. I think I'm gonna to the board a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara and then Mr. Anabudo.
Thank you. With respect to the comments that were just made, I am also listening, but I, I feel that we do have to be prepared for what, whatever can happen. I know the, the governor said there are certain conditions that will have to take place for us to interface three and we're not sure that's going to happen, which means that we do have to have the flexibility in our planning right now. Do we, do we have, do we have a plan if it's all virtual? Do we, we're trying to work out the hybrid, but I think we have to have both of those plans before the board so that we can figure out what will work based on the information when we absolutely have to make a decision, but I don't think we're quite there yet. I do agree that it is frustrating. I'm not quite sure what to do with that frustration, however. I have received a question with respect to new students coming into FCPS. They might be kindergarten students, they may be people moving into our districts and they are attempting to register, but they can't register before the deadline because the admins that would handle the registration aren't available, Dr. Braybrand. So that's a very practical question to address. My second question is, we know during our distance learning, excuse me, there were a number of students who were not really accessing our programs. What is our plan if those students continue in the virtual world or the virtual portion of our plan? How do we make sure we're not allowing those students to really be in a position where they're not accessing learning? Excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Two things there. And I'll let Sloan do the registration one here in a moment. Sloan or Teresa, I believe Sloan. Distance learning, we've identified through our multi-tiered systems of support, those kids were disconnected. We did look at data around, you know, virtual attendance. We have schools identifying who those kids are by name and by need. And so we are going to be reaching out to them, whether they're in person or face-to-face to make sure they stay connected. So we are developing those at each school. And for registration, Dr. Presidio or Ms. Johnson?
Before, before you go on to that, the other part of that question is, they obviously didn't access learning during the last school year, which means that was a loss of learning. So how are we bringing those kids up to speed so that we're not just contributing to achievement gaps?
Yep, yep. Dr. Presidio, do you want to talk a little bit about that or no have Mr. Gray and his team are working too with MTSS as well as your team?
Yeah, just, just real briefly, before teachers left for the summer break, we did identify, as Dr. Braybrand said, the students that we had concerns about that needed support. At the secondary level and at the high school level in particular, we reached out to those students to get them enrolled in our credit recovery academy. We increased space in our, in our high school credit recovery academy, which is a free program. We're running it virtually this summer and tried to enroll those students that we had concerns about. Similarly, at the elementary and the middle school level, the board provided funding for us to have virtual supports for students during the summer. So we've been able to, again, try to make connections with those kids that we're really hoping that they're going to work on the summer materials, learning packets that we put together for students. Those materials are optional, but we've got teachers who are working to reach out to those students during the summer. And then, of course, those students are already identified as needing additional supports and interventions as soon as the school year starts. And again, the board approved some additional funding for intervention services during, to occur during the school year, so expanded intervention services during the school year. So as soon as school kicks off again, we're, you know, we're ready to provide additional supports to them at the beginning of the year. With respect to your first question, we are, as part of our registration process, working with new families once the registration process begins, whether that's a rising kindergartner or somebody who's new to the county, to provide them with the same choices and the same options that we're providing to our existing students.
So I, I guess my last piece is, how do we monitor those students going forward?
So going forward, it will be part of the MTSS process that we're using in schools. So again, you know, we're looking at a number of indicators. Attendance certainly is one indicator. Ongoing academic performance in terms of some of the progress monitoring assessments that we're going to have in place for next year to make sure that students are on track. And again, using those additional funds that the board approved to support those students that need additional instructional time.
Thank you. Mr. Anabudo.
I just want to start by saying thank you to everyone for all the dialogue that's been happening up to this point. I think it's all very needed and appreciated. And I want to thank Ms. Corbett Sanders for mentioning something that I'd said earlier about the, the testing. So if we're doing, if we only have an hour and a half per teacher once a week, I know that in a lot of the, especially the higher level classes, testing is very regular and I can see it happening where a lot of asynchronous work is assigned to do at home and then we have to come to school just to take tests all day. So I want to ask if leadership is working to ensure that the curriculum provides for space for testing to be done virtually and to use the in-person time to have instruction be done collaboratively, contactless, of course, but as a group to foster group learning and use that time, I guess, more productively. And then my second question was about grading. I was wondering if that would continue the same way through, throughout the year or if it's, we're switching to a pass fail method. I was just wondering what the conversations are around that. And I just wanted to point out that I think the consensus amongst students, I guess I'm speaking for the ones that I've talked to, not all students, but asynchronous learning is hard. There, if it, if it needs to be done, there, it will suffer our performance, our, our performance will suffer. So grading, is it being altered to reflect that change? And is there any, any more conversations around, around that topic that are being had? Thank you.
Nathan, thank you. Sloan, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about testing ver, on the in-person days. That, that's a great question to answer for a kid or any kid, any students want to know. Nathan, I want you to know grading is going to be back to normal. We're not having this pass fail, we're not having only a half a grade, we're back to new instruction and graded instruction. The same grading policies a, as a normal school year. And Sloan, can you talk a little bit about assessment strategies with COVID-19 in both in-person and virtual?
Sure, thanks, Nathan. That really is a, a great question and it's something that we're talking to our principals about right now. And we would agree with you that we really want to make sure that that limited amount of in-person instruction time is really maximized to have teachers working with students and students working with each other. So that's really going to be the guidance that we're going to be providing to teachers when they return in the fall is we want to maximize that instructional time. And certainly students who are going to be learning full-time online can do assessments virtually. If we've, we've got secure testing environments, software that we use and that software can be used with students who might be at home, learning on asynchronous days as well. So I'm sure that there will be some mix of assessment that happens at home and some that happens in person, but we definitely want to maximize as much as we can the in-person instructional time.
Thank you. Ms. Saiswah, how is her? Followed by Mr. Fresh.
Great, thank you very much. First, I just wanted to say, I sort of really, really reemphasize, I'm glad to follow Mr. Anabudo on that. Nathan, you hit some great points. If we're having block scheduling, we have got to make office hours work in a way that's fair to our teachers and being creative. We cannot just leave our students to a two days a week virtual touch base with their teachers or one day a week, we have to have something else. So I'm just going to really emphasize that here. I have a lot of concerns, like Ms. Cohen said, about the guidance from our Health Department and really about what I read in terms of one thermometer for 500 students and the hand sanitizers. So can somebody please speak to the budgetary limitations as to why we're looking at those numbers or do we have budget to go beyond that or do we need to look for support from our board of supervisors to help us get more health-related equipment? Can someone speak to that? That would be helpful. In terms of the virtual soft opening, I, I don't think that we have enough time to have a discussion about that. I do know that I believe scenario one is a virtual opening for all if health conditions merit. I do think we need more help from the Health Department to know whether we should be considering that now or not. But I would also say that if we are going to consider that, Montgomery County is not starting two weeks late. So if we're going to consider that, I would also put on the table that we should move our start date back to August 25th because I don't know if starting virtually with a soft opening and a two-week delay is really fair to our students who have been out of the building since March. So I'm going to put that out there, but I personally think that we can't make that decision in this level of conversation. And so that's where I'm at with that. I do think we have a virtual option in case health conditions change. Regarding that, I do want to make sure that we are giving support to our teachers for the ones who are working both asynchronously and synchronously for those asynchronous days, so they aren't trying to do both while teaching four days a week. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
I know it was a lot, I apologize.
I know, that, that's what happens and, and I, I, I fully admit, I'm a 52-year-old man who is beginning to engage in some moments, having senior moments. Can you give me the, the, can you give me the two questions that you shared that you want to have me react to right now?
The, 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 the asynchronous, can we change the start date back so we get our students learning sooner if we're going to go all virtual? But really, the budget questions around what we budgeted for thermometers and things and do we need to get more support for that or do we have money for that?
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me talk a couple of things here that may be helpful. I really would like, as I mentioned earlier, I think, Dr. Anderson will be meeting as the new chair of the school board with Chairman McKay and, and County Executive Hill and myself. And I think this is a great chance to lay out, as you know from the budget approved a few weeks ago, we had expenditures that we had to dial back because we didn't have the money. And I know Ms. McLaughlin and other board members have talked about, can we look at some of that CARES money? You know, we got 20 million and we've spent it. And the county, 200 million and about 50% of the county's expenditures, could we have, you know, could we have some millions from that?
You broke up, how much did you say the county has? I apologize, you broke up for me. How much did you say the county has?
200 million. We have 20, they got 200. So there's certainly an argument to be made, we could work with them for some additional dollars on some of the things we already showed you in the budget that we budgeted for, but just didn't have the money. And especially to ensure us to school. We, we can certainly do that and I would work with Dr. Anderson to have those conversations and be able to present something to you if you want, as we look at our year-end budget in our next meeting or our next meeting or two before your recess. The start date, let me just say something here on, let me say something here, I'm, as I'm trying to think through. The board has chosen two options that we are, as you said, around the clock preparing We, we can prepare for simply a virtual option, but even a virtual option phased in, I gotta be honest, all this information we're doing is not for loss because even as you phase in, you're wanting to know about teachers, whether they'll come back face-to-face or in person. So some of the work we're doing now, even if you went all virtual with a phased-in, in-person approach, much of the information we're getting would help us understand our staffing needs in the fall. Even Montgomery County hasn't polled its teachers yet. Yes, they're going to start with, say, first graders the first week, but you haven't talked, talked to those first grade teachers across the whole system. Say we have 500 first graders, first grade teachers, are they all coming back or not? So you've got to have that element. We're asking our teachers that now. And so that is one of the things that we would have to do. We would still have to spend the time, you know, to build a master schedule and, and then figure out how to do that, of course, with the phasing in. But the last thing with asynchronous, we've already shared that we would look for more asynchronous support from our teachers who are doing the online option, especially at elementary school where there's a little bit less hours of instruction than, of teachers than at the in-person. Remember, middle and high are going through all the same numbers of instructional hours, it's just done differently face-to-face versus asynchronous. But support for asynchronous is part of what we shared today in our plan.
The last piece was that Health Department guidelines to whether we should do a virtual soft opening or virtual opening.
I think this is one of our biggest community and maybe even our biggest state issues, right? This is, this is not just Fairfax. This is all us saying, what is the trigger? What's it going to be? Scott Braybrand does not know that trigger. I, I'm just trying to do the best I can with the information that we have and the guidelines. And the guidelines are broad. The guidelines are broad from the state. The Health Department interprets those guidelines too broadly. There's not a specific number, how many, how many COVID cases to close a school? The answer has been, it depends. I don't have a better answer than that because I'm not the medical professional. That is what our medical professionals are saying, it depends. And I think what this board and community have to decide is, is that good enough? It's not good enough for some board members, it's not good enough for some of our families, it is good enough for others. Are we trying to reopen our society? Are we trying to reopen our schools? To what extent do we want to? The governor asked us to reopen schools in, in June with a phased approach and that's what we've been trying to do. The extent of how broadly we do it or the manner in which we do it has now clearly left up to school boards. And I want to continue to partner with you. I want to do it the right way, whichever way you want to do it. Right now, we are pursuing two options. Right now, we are pursuing two options at the same time. We could pursue one option with a gradual in-person, but as we do the gradual in-person, those folks would have to come back. And to allow them, you'd still be stuck later if you said, well, there'd still be choice, because you have to create even in the phase-in, oh, well, first graders are coming back, but these ones aren't gonna come back. So we're not quite out of this, having to figure out people who would want to stay virtual the whole year. If that makes sense. I hope it does to people listening and to board members, but that's the best way I can explain it.
Thank you. So at our first work session on return to school, I kind of peppered you with a bunch of detailed questions. And I guess I was just seeing what it would be like, because that's what the school board has been doing for the last month. We've been fielding hundreds of emails with answers to questions that we do or don't have answers for. I'd like to make another prediction that when we return to school in the fall, the school board will be peppered with questions about why one school is getting X or doing Y, and my school isn't. Because of the nature of how things are being presented to us, it seems very clear that many of the issues that happened in the spring, particularly around how the plan will be implemented, will lead to disparate implementation from school to school. So I'd like you to speak to some of that, about how we can limit that to make sure that everybody's getting the same quality. I'd also like you to talk to the idea of, as some constituents of mine have mentioned, of bringing on an independent public health expert to help guide us in interpreting what we're hearing from county health and from the state and from the feds. If you could speak to differentiation, you know, we know how that works in a classroom. I'd love to hear more about how that will work for remediation and intervention in the digital space. In terms of the default, I've had many people ask me why the default for families that do not answer the survey is to go in-person, when virtual might be the safest option, and it would certainly ease space concerns for the in-person options. I'll let you go from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Let me go backwards, and then I might need to ask what your first question was again, because I was taking notes at the same time. We approached this with the governor's announcement in June that we were reopening schools. And then on July, I think it was July 1st, that we were in Phase 3 with all students returning, however, under social distancing, six feet social distancing wherever possible. So we have entered into this, and it's a true statement. I have entered into this trying to do the reopening of schools with the idea of folks wanting to come back to schools versus not. And so when we did our survey thinking, we assumed those that would not be wanting the option of virtual would want to be back, because that is the normal, you know, we're not in normal times, but that is sort of the default to return to school. I mean, we may not get, we will not get every single person's response. And if the board thinks those should be the other way, you can direct me to make that the virtual default. But we would need to know that now for master scheduling purposes. Right now, we're gonna be assuming those are the in-person, and we're gonna add it. And so if the board thinks we should add it and make it the virtual, that's an important nugget that I would really need now. So with board direction, if you, and I would want somebody else on here to tell me if there's any other impacts I'm not thinking of. But I think we would need it before we start doing the master scheduling work, and it would determine how far we would go down the demand list, or not the demand list, but the preference list for teachers. Because if we have more virtual sections, there would be more virtual opportunities. So I would need board direction on that today, honestly. The independent public health expert, you know, Albert Cavalo, who's the superintendent of Miami-Dade, I was on CNN, but he was on Meet the Press Live. And he talked about meeting with the mayor and health department and his school board chair around the gating criteria. And I think, again, this issue isn't just a Fairfax County Health Department or even the state. I think this is a national issue that everybody wants to know. I'd like to work with the health department and county leadership around this, and maybe we together call in some additional work or consulting on what it looks like. But, you know, again, the best thinking right now has been, it really is situational. And I think that's a hang-up for many board members and many community members. Situational is too broad, too vague. So I'd like to pursue working with the health department and county executive and county chair and our new school board chair around this, and then come back with a recommendation. And then you said something at the very beginning, and I did not capture it. Or have I?
Essentially, essentially, I mentioned that, you know, in our first work sessions, I spent all of my time peppering you with specific questions, which we've now been doing as school board members, right? Being peppered with specific questions that we may or may not have answers to. And I foresee, based on what answers we do have, that we will be peppered with questions about the disparate implementation of this plan from school to school. And I'd like to know how we are going to maintain quality of implementation, fidelity of implementation, so that we don't have parents who are sharing stories again about how people were telling, you know, folks in schools not to contact them versus schools where they were hearing from folks two and three times a week. Those types of scenarios.
Yeah. I mean, better fidelity of implementation and expectations is more professional development time, which we're gonna have now with what your decision is. But I think you're on something that I want to say bigger to the board and our community. We have had inequities already, which we have to admit, now more than ever, racial inequity, socioeconomic. That has been with us for years. COVID only heightened it and made us more aware, and we couldn't look away from it, maybe more than, and maybe that's a silver lining of COVID. But giving choice for virtual and in-person creates inequity. Even though it was a decision to provide the equity of choice, it creates other inequities. Scheduling is affected based on the choice pattern that a school would make. It just is. And I don't, I mean, I racked my brain for days and nights and more nights, and there's just no way around it that allowing greater preference, really, my, remember the earlier part? I wasn't gonna do that much preference. And really, hey, everybody's coming back unless you have a medical need. Well, that didn't go over well with this board and community, so we gave more choice. But choice as itself creates inequities about how it will look at each school with scheduling availability. That's the best way I can say it. So that's my answer. It's not a good answer, but it's an honest answer.
Respectfully, Dr. Braebrand, this is Megan. I think you missed Carl's question. He's talking about fidelity of implementation, which actually goes back to a project management plan where you ensure the fidelity of implementation. This isn't about choice and equity. So I think you're gonna need to look at that more carefully.
Oh, well, if you were talking about better fidelity of implementation, as I had shared with Megan, Carl, we can share with what we're doing. And again, Sloan kind of hinted at it. We had two weeks to do project management with everybody home in March, knowing what the next day would be like. And we've got a chance now to much more carefully lay out not just expectations, but professional development and follow-up. And the implementation teams we have, we're putting teachers on there. We're gonna put, our principals are on there, our leadership team members. We're all gonna be tighter because we're all working on it together. And a lot of that did not happen as tightly in two weeks in March. That's my answer to that. And we had deeper plans that we can share with the board in the weeks ahead.
The last thing I'll say is I encourage you to do additional town halls. Teachers, regardless of the deadline passing, questions will still be coming. So I think we need to continue those dialogues.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Maron, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Great. I hope you can hear me okay. I just switched venues. So I just want to say that to the meeting managers, I do like this process, especially when we have so many unanswered questions that I think, hearing the information from you, Dr. Braebrand and staff, you know, I'm pleased to receive so much information. This is a time for me to listen and perhaps talk less. So thank you for that. I just want to speak to the bell schedule and the block schedule. I agree with keeping the bell schedule as proposed, because families and staff have made decisions around it. However, I do not favor the late release time for elementary school. But let's, you know, be sure to do whatever can be done to mitigate the negative effects for that individual, you know, for individual impact of that for our littlest ones. I agree with the block schedule, because I've heard personally from principals today in my district that this, you know, in my words, is the least bad option to be crafted at this time. I have three questions. One is, can students who are in the in-school instruction participate virtually if they get sick? Whether it's a cold or, heaven forbid, COVID? Is that instruction interchangeable and seamless? My second question is, I really want to advocate for being able to change the option midway. You know, can we aspire to a quarterly review? And then see, you know, can we offer families an option to change after that second quarter? And finally, I want to reiterate what my colleague Ms. Cohen said with exasperation. You know, our status with the county's work to ensure safety, we are the expert providers in education. They are the expert providers in public health. The dollars, the people, power, the plans, the tools. I want us to collaborate, but I'm just not seeing how that's happening. I'm really glad to see the updates on the presentation over facilities and on our end. But if we want to be data-driven, we need the data from the county, and we need that help. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Maron, let me try a couple of those, and I may have missed one. I wrote it down, and I can't read my writing at the moment. But in school short-term, Ms. Maron, the kid's gonna stay in the in-person class. We're not sending them away to virtual teachers and virtual learning. So short-term.
But I meant like if the child is sick, let's say, you know, they get the flu or something, right? So what happens when they're out sick, they're in-person? Do they stay home on an in-person day? Can they access school virtually that day? Or then they're just missing their in-person day?
Oh, I see. Could we let that kid virtually come in? So I see a scenario like that. Well, one, big picture, they're gonna stay with their teacher that's in-person. The teacher will at least, like normal, send assignments. They'll be able to have asynchronous work. I'm not ready to say that it could be a virtual link. When we were looking at an idea where teachers could do both virtual and in-person at the same time, one thing our teachers said, man, that's a lot to do. Now, this is just about one kid being sick. But the other was, the bandwidth in our schools to stream out of a school was more limited than we realized. So we'd have to look at that. I don't want to guarantee that on July 13th. We could look at it, but I don't want to guarantee it. Here's my nugget for you on staffing. All of you keep asking about, I mean, it's a good question, so I'm not mad about it. It's a good question. Why can't we look at the quarter? Why can't we look at the semester? My question back to you is, do we want to tell our teachers who wanted virtual, you're virtual till the end of the quarter, you're virtual till the end of the semester, and you gotta come back? That's not what we're saying. We're letting our teachers make a decision to be virtual this year. And they may not be ready. They have underlying health conditions. The vaccine's not been done by everybody. So that's the nervousness. If you, if, I understand the flexibility piece, but if you yank everybody out of virtual back into in-person, you're gonna have overcrowded classrooms when you do it, and some teachers who are virtual who just aren't ready to come back yet. I think it creates more uncertainty for our staff and parents and kids about selection.
Can I just respond? I mean, something we hear is, well, Montgomery County's doing it. So can you speak to that, please, so that people can know what this division, you know, is a little bit smaller than ours? They can do it, but why can't we? The grass is greener.
Yeah, well, here's what I can do. I promise this. Between now and our next RTS meeting, I'll call Jack Smith. We've been talking, but not this past week or weekend, right before he released the plan. I can find out how he's doing it. Or, you know, I can, to the degree he wants to share with me, I'll share with you what he's looking at. We are meeting with our region principals here in Northern Virginia later this week, just to check in with all of them. But I can look to see what I can come up with.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. I'll share a few comments and then my questions. The AB schedule, I definitely understand the benefits of it. And from hearing from my principals as well overwhelmingly, this is something that is preferred. But I still have those concerns regarding the little in-person check-in with, for some of our students, that they're seeing some of their teachers just once a week. So we have to find a way to mitigate that lack of contact. But I do know that there are a lot of benefits that have been cited by a number of people. And as the principals are the ones who are the boots on the ground making this happen, I really want to support their thinking along this as well. So I'm definitely, I will be on board with that. One of my, one of the things that I wanted to talk about regarding budget, I share that, Ms. McLaughlin, and I are in full support and engaging with our board of supervisors to see how we can have some of our unmet needs be supported through their CARES Act. And so that's a conversation that I look forward to having as soon as possible with Chairman McKay. I appreciate the conversation regarding changing the non-response default from in-person to virtual. However, I'm of the mind that we're too far down the road to do this at this time. This is due in three days, and we have a lot of communication that's been out in our community that has shared that if you are not responding, it is going to be the in-person option, which is the more, this is the option that our parents and communities are accustomed to having. So it makes sense to me what that's the default. So at this point, I would not want to change it midstream to have that be reversed. One of my key questions is regarding, what is it that we are doing regarding our low incidence programs? Students who, if they choose virtual? Okay, I guess I will have to send my questions in, since I have run out of time.
Dr. Anderson, one thing I'd like to say, I absolutely think, and you know, real-time talking to my staff, what you just said about the community, to switch the default now would be really a major communications issue. We've spent, you know, seven weeks saying that the default was in-person. So I think that would be really hard to do. I think we need to continue to encourage everybody who wants virtual. I know this. We have people right now who are watching this and wanting to see this updated information to help make their final decisions, both staff and parents. So I think this information today is gonna be very helpful to decide whether folks want virtual or in-person. So I would recommend that we stick with our guidance there, just like we've done with the bell schedule. And if you have other questions that you didn't get to, you know, share them, send them to Kathleen Thomas, and I will make sure they get followed up at the next RTS meeting.
Thank you, and I will do that.
Next, we have Ms. Bukarski, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. You know, I do want to share that for whatever reason, it seems the last few conversations about return to school, we are always, you know, hurried and don't have enough time. And while I do have very specific questions, can ask them now. And I think that is causing frustration in our community. So and I know, Dr. Braebrand, you've been working very hard, and your staff has. And I want to acknowledge that, and I see that in our schools. And I want to make sure our community recognizes that, which I believe they do. Having said that, I am in a place where I have been a very big proponent of getting our kids in school. There are so many benefits to that. We all know that virtual learning, even for my own kids, was not effective. They are not developmentally ready to engage as effectively as in-person. Having said that. Having said that, opening our schools and our plan has always been predicated around community spread. And that is what, you know, the guidance has been from AAP, CDC. And we are seeing numbers going up. We are seeing hotspots within our own community. And, and that worries me. And that worries me to be here two days before a deadline and not to have very clear guidelines for our staff, for our students and parents as to, you know, what will happen in your situation, in your school, if somebody is sick? You know, that, that waiting for the confirmation of a positive test, what does that mean? And I just increasingly every day, while I appreciate the need to coordinate and, and talk with our health department.
Bukarski?
I think she loves connection.
Yes. Your time is up. Are you finished?
I'm finished, sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, do you have any comments on that?
What, what I think I'd like to do, as far as the, the relationship with working with the health department and I, I'd like to work with Dr. Anderson and have our meeting with the chairman and the county executive and then plot the next way forward. I think that's the right way to go. And if we think we need to do something differently afterward, then I think we can have that conversation. But I'd like to pursue that jointly and go from there.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Oh, I believe I already got my one turn.
Thank you. You put your hand down, please. And Karen Corbett Sanders?
If we're not doing go-bags, it's, I can hold off.
All right. Ms. May?
Dr. Anderson, were you trying to do something?
I just wanted to be sure before we move to the SR and RP's that we kind of, we recapped on a few issues, but I will wait to do that until after you and Ms. Tolan have had a chance to share your feedback.
Okay, Ms. Tolan is planning to guide us through next steps based on Google Doc. I, I won't take up time. I'm concerned about our time. I'm just gonna say that I do, from the beginning, I felt strongly that virtual is the way to go. I know that it was only about three of us on the board who felt that way at the time. I'm concerned, I mean, about, you know, human life and all of it and whatever considerations are made, are, are being discussed. So I just wanted to make sure I expressed that. And second piece is, we just received an update from the Department of Education that tomorrow there will be a call, a press conference from the governor at 2:00 PM discussing what their plans are. They're looking at, you know, the data and trying to make some determinations. But the feedback I'm hearing from them is, take your time, there's no rush, you know, make sure that safety is prioritized. And, you know, the final note is, is we don't have the data, we know that, right? The public, as we give them choice, is not privy to that information. They're not privy to the fact that we are not getting what we need from the health department. They don't know that we're, the numbers that, you know, we're, we're testing and, and that we're aware of are not necessarily thorough and, and complete. And I'd be remiss not to say that we know there's political pressure out there and people who are taking advantage of the moment to, to make people think that we're, we're fine when, when the facts may suggest otherwise and we see what's happening across the country. So I, I just want to, you know, put that out there and saying that we do have an obligation or responsibility to make some of these calls and I would support, you know, any motion or, or step that's taken in that direction as we either reconsider or move towards softer openings or things like that.
Thank you. I'll just make a couple of quick remarks. I would like to say I definitely support the move to the block scheduling. And that in discussions with the principals that I've talked to, they are also looking at this even though it is only a chance for students to see their teachers once per week. But the scheduling will allow for much more help and assistance to particular students if they have this schedule flexibility. I also think that it's too late to change our default on asking families what they're looking for. A number of principals that I've talked to also have very robust plans for reaching out to those families that don't reply to just make sure that they understand what the ramifications of that are. You know, I get up in the morning and, you know, look at the, the maps and the charts around COVID numbers every day and pore over those like many of you. And the rising numbers in Virginia are making me nervous. And the hotspots that we have here in Fairfax County, you know, are very concerning to me. And I would really like to see, I know we have much more health information coming out later today, but I really need to see a solid plan for those communities that are dealing with hotspots. Having said all of that, I don't feel comfortable today making a vote on, you know, changing any of our scenarios. You know, we need to make sure the scenarios that we have are very well thought out and that we are ensuring the safety of our staff. I definitely want to take a look at those budget numbers around PPE and sanitizer, et cetera. With that, I think I'll leave it at that. At this point, we do have a long list of next steps. And as Dr. Anderson pointed out, Dr. Brabran wanted us to, I'm gonna give him the go-ahead on a couple of things here today and we need to circle back on. I guess I might suggest, as we have done sometimes in the past, given that we are over an hour overtime, but this is a super important topic, that perhaps we could look at our list of next steps.
Ms. Tolan, if I may just take the pulse of the board on a couple of issues before we move to the next steps?
That'll be great.
Thank you so much. I better put my camera back on. I have three things for us to revisit and I will list all three of them. The first, the first is to give direction to Dr. Brabran and his staff to review the leave policies. So we have options that are a little bit more proportional for our teachers who will be working in the schools and may not have earned enough leave or will use their leave if there is a, an illness or a COVID outbreak. The second area for discussion is the tuition, tuition waiver for staff. We will need to have, I'd like for us to give direction to Dr. Brabran as to whether or not we'd like for that to be detailed out in terms of its cost and the impact to our school system if we were to provide that waiver for staff with students who are coming in from out of the county. So I will stop right there and then I'll come to the third one in just a little while. If we could please lower the hands for us to discuss and show our support to give direction to Dr. Brabran regarding revisiting the leave policies and to bring a draft to the board that is more comprehensive as per this discussion today. Please raise your hand if you are in support of that. We have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Derinak Kofax, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Sizmore Heizer, Ms. Maron.
Dr. Anderson, Tolan and I have our hands up, but we're listed as moderators.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was looking for that. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, I was having trouble with my laptop. Can you just repeat the vote?
The first one is to give direction to Dr. Brabran to review the leave policies so that we have some more flexibility and additional resources to our staff. Would you be in support of that?
Yes, and he should also interfere with the county.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And so I believe that is unanimous along with myself. So that is a direction to Dr. Brabran to come back to us at another time with a draft policy regarding leave.
Dr. Anderson, I have a question to that direction we gave him. In my chat bar, are those questions saved? Because I specifically asked the question, but it wasn't answered that we, the county, I believe, has a leave bank and we should also just have parity on how they're handling COVID.
Absolutely. Ms. Mulberg did collect the questions from the chat.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. The second question, just to reiterate, is do we want to explore a tuition waiver for our teachers who are coming with students from out of county? We would like to direct the superintendent to determine what the cost of that will be and the impact of perhaps additional students coming in from out of county. So please lower your hands so I could start again. If you are in support of providing the superintendent with this direction for tuition waiver exploration, please raise your hands. We have Karen Corbett Sanders, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Derinak Kofax, Ms. Maron, Ms. Sizmore Heizer, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Bukarski, and I will check for Ms. Tolan and Ms. Omes are also on board as well as Dr. Anderson. That is also unanimous. So thank you.
Dr. Anderson, again, just to clarify for the superintendent, he will look into this and then bring it back to the board.
Absolutely. This is for conversation, for us to assess whether or not this is something we want to pursue as a board. This is not a decision-making vote that we have just taken. It's a vote to get more information.
Great. I would suggest that as our county partners, it might be worthwhile talking with Chairman McKay and the county executive to just let them know it's something the board's looking into.
Thank you. That is a very good idea, Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you so much. The third issue, which was for us to hear each other regarding revisiting the scenarios that we approved earlier, well, last month regarding whether or not it would be an all-virtual opening or the choice between options two and three for our families, between scenarios two and three. Overwhelmingly, what I was able to discern is that there are concerns with everyone on all of the aspects. But I'm hearing from our board that we are uncomfortable with having that decision be made on the fly as it was presented this afternoon or are rooted in the fact that we are providing choice for our families. So at this point, this will not be an issue that we revisit in this conversation. If we need to bring this up again at another time, perhaps we can have more robust discussions. I am not going to put forward a vote to we, to undo a decision that was made back in June which has set all of the motions for our current plans.
Ms. Andrews, Dr. Anderson, I would like to speak to that. I, I would like to just briefly speak to that.
Go ahead, please take a minute.
I, I want to say, I, and I know you were just using words, but I, I did, it wasn't an on-the-fly decision. I know you know that.
I'm so sorry.
I, I, I do want to clarify that. And what I would like is, I, I would like, though, the option for you to present to us. And it's gonna have to be quickly, an option for, an opportunity for a work session. Could we talk about that? Because there was agreement, but things are changing. And there, there is still a fear. And I know we, we might not be able to get to this before people have to have questions answered, but I still would love the opportunity for this board to have a robust discussion getting the changing terrain that's out there right now and given the fact that we don't have the answers we need.
Thank you for that. I will definitely be in conversation with Dr. Brabran and to see the possibility of those additional discussions. And I do apologize for my, my, my statement. I didn't mean on the fly. I just meant it was just a very recent proposal.
Dr. Anderson?
Ms. McLaughlin, I do see your hand. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I really appreciate where Ms. Kofax is coming from, but I'm very concerned with how nervous our employees and families already have been. We have three different scenarios that everyone's well aware of. If the COVID data in Fairfax County, the public health conditions change, we will have to consider shutting down the school system. Until such time, we have two options for families to consider while public health conditions support the return to school or those who wish to stay in virtual. I am nervous leaving today's meeting that the public would think this school board could suddenly change course. And I was shocked at Superintendent Brabran saying that if the board gave him direction, he's the CEO of this school system. His team developed these three ways in which we'll deliver instruction. I think we need to stop giving the impression that the 10th largest school system doesn't know what it's doing. Everything's predicated on public health conditions. Two months from now, we don't know where we'll be, but we've got three options that will address whatever our public health conditions are. So I respectfully ask that we don't keep entertaining this and creating alarm for the community.
And I respect that's your opinion, Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you.
Thank you both. Given the time at this point, I will be turning over the, the gavel back to Ms. Tolan to continue with the next steps and the second portion of this work session.
So perhaps before we go into the next steps, Dr. Brabran, I would like to just make sure that you feel that clear direction to proceed with the bell schedule that you had previously put forward and the, the block scheduling.
Yes, those were my recommendations. I didn't hear otherwise from the board. So I'll, I'll move forward with both the bell schedule and the AB block. And I got the two additional actions about looking at a policy for leave for our in-person and looking at a tuition waiver, just doing an analysis of that and bringing it to the board. That, that's what I have. I don't know whether you want to, but I know since this is next steps about return to school, if you want to try to expedite time, can you just let me take it? And if there's something I can't address, I mean, I'll, next week, you'll have another update. And if I can't address that next step then, I'll have it at the next one. But you don't, you don't have to feel like from my end that we have to go through each one. We're gonna do our best to look at those next steps unless board members are uncomfortable with the next step that they do not want me to bring back. So that's my only point there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And fellow board members, given the time that we have, if anyone has an issue with that, I would like to give everyone, we've done this before, have our clerk perhaps email the next steps to us, give you an opportunity to make changes and then we'll forward those to Dr. Brabran. He also, as I mentioned earlier in the conversation, has the long list of questions that each board member submitted, you know, over the weekend. So I think a lot of those are showing up now in the next steps or we've talked about today. If there's anything missing, you know, we'll take care of that as well.
That sounds great, Ms. Tolan, just to make sure nothing's missing. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, are we, at this point, I guess what I'd like to do is adjourn this portion of our meeting. Perhaps give people a very, very fast bathroom break. And we will re-adjourn in five minutes to talk about the SR and R changes.